All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. I had to actually glance down for that one. And welcoming you to a Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County. And we always start the day and meetings by honoring God and by honoring our great nation. Today, we have Pastor Tom Pelt from the Church at Bradenton, who is going to deliver the invocation, after which our Marine Corps veteran and county commissioner Jason Bearden is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you are able at this time, please stand.
Good morning. Please join me in the prayer that our Lord taught us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. It's kind of refreshing. All right, so then let's go to county administrator, Mr. Washington, for updates and announcements and changes to today's agenda. Sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Updates to the agenda for meeting February 28th, 2023, dated February 24th. Awards and presentations, proclamations, Gold Star Day proclamation. This item was added to the agenda. Changes to the consent agenda by the county administrator, item number six, execution of the transportation reimbursement agreement with JDN JD2 Enterprises LLC. This agenda item was added to the consent agenda. Development services, item number 12, approval of the final Platten Associated documents of Summer Woods Phase 3B and 4B in District 1. This agenda item was added to the consent agenda. Financial management, item number 13, formerly number 10, adoption of the Budget Amendment Resolution B-23-064, and the Budget Amendment Resolution B-23-65. Infrastructure sales. This agenda item was updated to include a revised Budget Amendment Resolution B-23-Z064. Property management, item number 29, adoption of resolution R-23041, authorizing the chairperson to execute a landscape maintenance and installation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for improvement to State Road 64 in District 3. The agenda item was added to the consent agenda. Item number 40, former, execution of an interlocal agreement with the city of Bradenton for temporary right-of-way maintenance for the State Road 64 and 43rd Street West to 75th Street West. This agenda item was deleted from the consent agenda. Advertise public hearings, presentations upon request. Development services, item number 40, approval and execution of LDA-22-01, local development agreement for Lake Flores. This agenda item was updated to include a revised local development agreement with exhibits. Advertise public hearings, presentation schedule. Community and veteran services, item number 42, adoption of resolution R-23-038, authorizing the submission of the Home ARP allocation plan as part of the substantial amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Developments HUD FY 21 and 22 Annual Action Plan. This agenda item was updated to include written public correspondence. Commissioner agenda and comments. Commissioner Ballard, item number 47, discussion on an agricultural overlay district for Elwood Park. This agenda item was updated to include written public correspondence. Commissioner Baugh, item 48, discussion of potential human resource department solutions. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Chairman Van Ostenbridge, number 49, discussion of the House Bill HB 947. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Item 50, Penn Bay Boat Ramp Discussion. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Item 41, search for process of new county administrator. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Updates to the agenda for a Board of County Commissioners' meeting dated February 28th. This document and change February 27th, 2023. Changes to the consent agenda under administrator, item number six, execution of transportation reimbursement agreement with JDN JD2 Enterprises LLC. This agenda item has been deferred to March 28th, 2023. Item number six, approval of the revised 2023 BLCC committee assignments. This agenda item was added to the consent agenda. Development services, item number 10, adoption of the resolution R-23-43, R-23-045, R-23-046, and R-23-049, updating building fees for licensing, floodplain, building, and driveway. This agenda item was updated to include revised resolutions R-23-043, R-23-045, and R-23-046, and a new resolution R-23-049. Item number 12, approval of final Platten Associated documents of Summer Woods Phase 3 and Phase 4B, District 1. This agenda item was updated to reflect additional language to line item number two, record the 11th Amendment to the Community Declaration of Summer Woods with an attached jointer from Summer Woods Homeowners Association, Inc. Those are all the updates to the agendas, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, are there any items that any of you would like pulled from today's consent agenda? Any items removed from consent?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Satcher?
I'd like to either pull or defer item number six, please.
Okay. Item six is pulled. Are there any other items commissioners would like to pull from today's consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will move forward then with awards, proclamations, and presentations. Commissioner Ron, before you go anywhere, we are going to entertain motions. We do need to approve motions on these first. So we have a motion by Commissioner Ballard to approve, seconded by Commissioner Baugh. We can cast our votes now. Okay, and awards, proclamations, and presentations passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. All right, then we're going to start with our first proclamation, which is adoption and presentation of proclamation designating March 5th, 2023, as Gold Star Day in Manatee County. There will not be a presentation, but the proclamation will be read by Commissioner Baugh. Ma'am?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be presenting this on Sunday to the Gold Star family that is being recognized. But here's the proclamation. Whereas thousands of United States Armed Forces troops have served America in times of peace and war, and though through their dedication and sacrifices, our nation and its people have been assured safety and prosperity, and our freedoms, ideals, and values preserved, protected. And whereas many of these brave and committed men and women gave the ultimate sacrifice their lives during military service, and their families left to mourn have also paid a great service for a nation. And whereas, dating back to World War I, and a symbol of great honor that no one wants, a Gold Star lapel pin is presented by the United States Department of Defense to the spouses, parents, and children of a fallen servicemember killed in combat or in support of certain military activities. And whereas, known as a Gold Star family, flags or banners with a gold star are often displayed by the family to make others aware of the sacrifice that their family members have made, and to honor their service to our country. And sadly, additional stars are sometimes added to represent each military member who died should the family suffer more than one loss. And whereas, Tribute to the Troops, TTTT, was founded by singer and songwriter Rocky Lynn in 2004, and its mission is to honor, treasure, and remember the sacrifices of the nation's fallen heroes and their families. And whereas, the ceremony for U.S. Army SPC Christopher Scott Brockway will be held on March 5th, 2023, at the American Legion Post 24, located at 2,075th Street, Bradenton, Florida, and will provide the opportunity to honor the fallen servicemember's family, and let them know their loss will never be forgotten. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that March the 5th, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Gold Star Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 28th day of September, 2023, and signed by our Chair, Kevin Van Ostenbridge, and signed by Angelina Colaniso, Clerk of the Court. Commissioners, I thank you for the honor to present this to the Gold family, Gold Star family on Sunday. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing it forward to us, and written very well. Commissioner Bearden?
I really appreciate the board coming up with this proclamation. It's one of those things where I have found myself escorting some of my best friend's mothers to receive their Purple Heart. And it's not only the men and the women that take the ultimate sacrifice, it's also the families. And having a proclamation such as this to honor the Gold Star families is something I think every county should do. So I really appreciate the proclamation today.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, sir. All right. Next on the list is Commissioner Mike Ron. Excuse me. I assume the two gentlemen in green are the ones that need to come stand behind him. If you want to come down and stand behind him while he reads his proclamation, which is the adoption and presentation, the proclamation for March, designating March 2023, as Irish American Heritage Month in Manatee County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. We have the luck of the Irish in the room this morning, and I'm sure that everybody will look forward to celebrating the great Irish day of March 17th, which will be St. Patrick's Day. I'm sure that we'll all go out and celebrate that during the day and have a great time, as we always do on St. Patrick's Day. It's a great honor to be able to say, to give this proclamation this morning as part of my Irish heritage. It goes back a long way on my side of the family, and it's just a great honor to do this. So it's a little long, so hopefully bear with us, and we'll get through this. Whereas, by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had immigrated to American colonies and played a crucial role in America's independence. And whereas, five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent, and three signers were Irish-born. And whereas, Irish Americans helped fashion a system of government for our young nation. And whereas, 22 presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish heritage. And whereas, in 1792, Irish-born James Hoban provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of our great Capitol. And whereas, Irish-born Commodore Barry, John Barry, was recognized by the United States Congress in September of 2002 as the first flag officer of the United States Navy. And whereas, whereas in 1883, sorry, whereas Commodore John Barry again fought the last sea battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida. And whereas, in 1883, 18, sorry, 1813, Captain Oliver Perry, an Irish-American, achieved a major naval victory in the Battle of Lake Erie. And whereas, in 1942, the five Sullivan brothers made the ultimate sacrifice for democracy and freedom during the naval battle of Guadalcanal, and later had a destroyer, the USS Sullivan, commissioned in their memory. And whereas, the Irish became, the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. And whereas, three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were actually military, Irish military officers. And whereas, Father Richard Arthur, an Irish-born priest from Limerick, who was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in 1597, a judge of La Florida established the first public school in America open to both boys and girls of all races. And whereas, Andrew Jackson, who, whose family came from County Atrum, served as Florida's military governor following acquisition by the United States. And whereas, Irish Americans, since America's inception, have provided and continue to provide leadership and service to this nation's political, business, and religious establishments. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and many valuable contributions of Irish Americans. Now be it proclaimed, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that March 23rd shall be known and designated and set aside as Irish American Heritage Month in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present, voting the 28th day of February, 2003, signed by our Chair and by the clerk of the county court. Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right, gentlemen, who is here to accept the proclamation? And would you like to say a couple of words?
My name is Pat Thielen, and I'm the local president for the St. Finian of Clonard Division of the Ancient Order of Hibernians. And we request this every year. I think our first one was actually last year. We've been in existence since 2019 locally, but we've been in the state of the Florida for decades, possibly a century. And we will continue and pledge to continue our efforts for, through our fraternal organization, to, to honor the commitment that we have in charity and unity, and provide for different charities around this county, as well as the entire state of Florida. And that's all I have to say. But thank you very much for this recognition and honoring our organization.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard?
Thank you all so much for being here today, and I'm excited that we have this proclamation. As, as someone with Irish heritage of my own, and my husband also has very heavy Irish heritage, I'm, I'm interested in, in the things that the Hibernians are doing, and excited for their, for their charitable work. So thank you for the proclamation.
I enjoy doing the surveyors and mappers week each year. One of the first shadowing days that I did was with our surveyors. So, and as I was told then, that it is the second oldest profession in the world. This is what they told me, I'm telling you. They told me some other things out in the field, but, you know, we won't get into that. So whereas surveyors and mappers are counted among the founding leaders of our country, we're instrumental in the formation of property boundaries, which support the enjoyment of property ownership. Whereas, we recognize the valuable contributions of the surveying and mapping profession to history, development, and quality of life, in Florida and nationwide, and make important decisions based on the knowledge and expertise of licensed surveyors and mappers. Whereas, the surveying and mapping profession requires special education, training, the knowledge of mathematics, the related physical and applied sciences, and requirements of law for evidence. And whereas, surveyors and mappers are uniquely qualified and licensed to determine and describe land and water boundaries for the management of natural resources and protection of private and public property rights. Whereas, the continual advancements and instrumentation have required the surveyor and mapper not only to be able to understand and implement the methods of the past, but also to learn and employ modern technology in finding solutions to meet challenges of the future. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County that March 19th through 25th shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Surveyors and Mappers Week in Manatee County, Florida. It's adopted with a quorum present and voting this 28th day of February, 2023, signed by the Chair and by the Clerk of the Court. So I learned a lot of interesting things, actually, the week that I, or the day that I was out there with the, with the surveyors. One thing is, even though I'm in real estate, as you look around you, literally every square inch of the earth at some point or another has been surveyed and platted by surveyors. A surveyor at some point or another has literally plotted off every square inch of this county, the state, the country, literally the entire planet, which I thought was really pretty interesting. And of course, if you go back in history, as I mentioned in the very first paragraph, some of the founding fathers, including, juxtaposedly, George Washington, probably the most famous surveyor, but it is a really, it's, it's a profession that's steeped in history, and it's a very proud profession. So I really enjoyed my time with them. Who is here to accept the proclamation? Hope I didn't steal all your notes. Okay.
My name is Brian Bellino. I'm the county surveyor, survey division manager, and thank you so much, and thank you for the nice speech you gave. Very impressed and in awe with all this. This is the first time I ever did anything like this and be, be recognized, and especially have a great bunch of people behind me. And I'll be honest with you, probably that's one of the reasons why I came to the county, is because I had such a dedicated and loyal staff to the profession. And we have guests here also from the private sector, and I just, I'm just very tickled to have this presentation, and we're going to be, will be very, display it pretty proudly up there. But this is not just about me, obviously. This is for the entire surveying and mapping society. The National Surveyors and Mappers Society actually gave us, sent us free of charge some trinkets, we'll say, to commemorate the surveying and mapping profession. We got you guys, all commissioners, a little grab bag over there. We have at the reception desk for the audience to take, if you would like. It's the same thing that's in the grab bag that's out there. There's some very interesting things for the children to learn about surveying. They have a nice colorful map. So if anybody has any children, there's a nice little bedroom poster that has some very unique things on it and informative. So with that, again, thank you so much, and I, and this is my staff, and Priscilla's in the back for some reason, but she's there.
Step up, Priscilla.
Come here, Priscilla. Please, so you can go down. And...
You're trying to talk into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make sure everybody gets acknowledged. You got Tom, Priscilla, Eric, Alexander, Austin, and Joe. That's my staff. And there are seven of us, and we work very hard, and we work for every department there is in the county. And again, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, I don't see anybody on the board, but just to say, I look forward to this every year, this proclamation, because that's the only time we ever get to see all of you, you know, is when you're up here before us for this. So we just thank you, and thank you for what you do for the county. Obviously, we can't do our jobs without you. It's, it's a team. So thank you, guys. Well-deserved recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move on to citizen comment on future agenda items. We'll open that now. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda, but may appear on a future agenda before this board? There is one person signed up, and that is Deana Sabou. Is Deana Sabou? S-A-B-O-U. Hopefully I'm saying it right. Okay, she doesn't seem to be here, so then we'll open up to the floor. Yes, ma'am. If there's anyone who would like to come forward to speak on an item that's not on today's agenda, but may appear on a future agenda, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and then you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge. Hi, my name's Maureen Marigan. I am a vice mayor of Longbow Key, but I'm also a resident of Manatee County, and I'm here actually as a resident. I wanted to, one, a couple of things. Thank you for a few things that are happening, and then just make you aware of a few things from a staff perspective. It's all about communication, and Commissioner Van Ostenbridge has been very involved in various meetings that we've had down there in Longbow, so we thank you for that. And I know Mr. Washington will be involved with meeting with our new town administrator shortly, I think in the upcoming month. A few things for a thank you standpoint. One is Longbow Key, and these are your words, you said, "We're a donor community," and so we provide a lot in terms of tax dollars, a lot to the school board, and don't require a lot of services in return. So, and we are a town that is split into two counties, as you're, you're well aware. So there's always an eye to what is one county doing versus another county, and if, you know, Sarasota's putting $10 million into a park, it's like, you know, what's Manatee County doing? What are our, you know, what's, what are we doing for our residents? But I wanted to thank you, one, for helping to accelerate the FDOT project that is involved in a very busy pedestrian intersection that we have on Longbow Key. So the county, working with FDOT, has helped us to accelerate it, helped to fund it, so we thank you for that. I understand Commissioner Van Ostenbridge is working with our mayor to reactivate, looking at what we can do from a community education center on the north end, so we appreciate that. I also want to... I also want to thank you for the help when we have red tide of going out there and actually cleaning the beaches there. The two things where I would request a little bit of help on, one would be, and we spoke about this, I think, two months ago, or two years ago, was uniting the transit system, the public transit system for Sarasota and Manatee County on Longboat Key. Commissioner Cruz had commented, "We've got a lot of workers that come in, why can't they go down and work in, you know, where the St. Regis is being built?" And we discussed this two years ago, I think the St. Regis is getting close to getting finished, and we still haven't resolved, how do we have one public transit system? So that would be one. The other thing that really impacts workers on Longboat Key in particular is the traffic coming off on the beach. The beaches are always busy this time of year, there's nothing we're going to do about in volume, but in terms of fairness, if you're coming off of Longboat Key and you're a worker, a landscaper, someone who works in our public works department, firemen, policemen, a lot of our workers live in Bradenton, and what happens is because there are multiple exits out of Coquina Beach, they get backed up. So rather than a fair, one car goes forward and another car goes forward, you can have upwards to 75 people leave the beach before five cars get off of Longboat Key. So I would just ask that when you look at reactivating Coquina, you're going to have 200 more parking spots come online that potentially have a traffic engineer look at how we are exiting people. Not going to change the volume, but we just want it fair so that people that are trying to get home to their kids, get home to their families that are workers, can get off as fast as a beachgoer can. And so, thank you again for the open communication, and thank you for all you do to support the Manatee County residents on Longboat.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We appreciate you coming to speak with us. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda but may appear on a future agenda? Okay, we're going to close future agenda items at this time, and I'm on the board to speak. So I'll start with transit. Just want to reply to the vice mayor's comments. So I'll start with transit. We have discussed transit with, obviously, the town council, but we scheduled, this county commission scheduled, a joint meeting with the Sarasota County Commission that seems to keep getting sort of delayed and pushed back, but I'm told that there is a hard date set for it now, and I think transit is at the top of the list for discussion. Commissioner Cruz and I both felt that that was an important one to discuss. One, we wanted to talk about changes they've made to their transit system, but how we can, you know, adopt some of those changes to ours, but Longboat Key is also on the list to discuss how we can come up with a sort of a more uniform method of transit for the key, because it is so long. 13, 15 miles? Something like that? Yeah. So, and literally half and half in Manatee and Sarasota County. Coquina Beach Parking Lot, we've been out there with Mayor Chappie, and we've looked at different ways to sort of, we can just using our public works equipment, sort of change the layout and the ingress and the egress out there. One thing we did is we moved all disabled parking down to one end, so it's pretty isolated, and it's near the restroom as well. We felt like that, you know, sort of putting that next, that amenity right next to their parking, you know, would help in general. And if a path has been some pressure to get some kind of a hardened path to get wheelchairs out to the beach, and if we were going to do that by putting all the disabled parking in one location, that would make that, you know, easier and a little more simplified as well. But I will talk about ingress and egress, and what kind of changes we can make there as well. You mentioned the FDOT roundabout and beach cleanup, and before I get into that, I just, we have three freshmen and commissioners, just let them know that when I was a freshman, Longboat Key had actually come to this board prior to, just prior to my, you know, coming on the board, and they had actually asked for the board to consider annexing them entirely into Sarasota County. That would have been to a great detriment to Manatee County. Obviously, Longboat Key is one of the most, I'm sure Commissioner Baugh will, all of you district commissioners will argue with me, but District 3 is the most beautiful district in Manatee County.
Oh, no, we are.
And, and of course, Longboat Key is an important part of District 3, and we didn't want to lose that. And so, I started mending fences right away, and it went well. The council and the mayor were very, and the administrator were all very open to mending fences, and the relationship seems to be healed, and everyone's, you know, sort of in a good place now. But one of the things that we did is they are donor communities, so we get roughly $36 million annually in property taxes from Longboat Key, and the school district gets roughly the same amount from Longboat Key. The school district, it's even a greater, it's even more obvious with the school district. They have $36 million in property taxes, and there are seven children from Longboat Key enrolled at Anna Maria Elementary, and those are the only seven children enrolled in public schools from Longboat Key. So the mayor and I even joked that the school district could fly those children to Switzerland on a private jet every week and bring them home on the weekends, and put them in boarding school in Switzerland, and it would still save money in the end. So it is a donor community. I think that's, that's fair. And Longboat Key accepts that they're a donor community. They have actually, they voted for the increase in millage for the school district the last time it came up, by almost 70%. So, it's, all they're looking for is a little love in return, it seemed to me. So, one of the things we did is we found out that no one was raking those beaches at all after red tides. Went out there like a month after a red tide, and it looked like a war zone on the beach, and so we did rake the beach for them, and we don't do it as frequently as we do on Anna Maria, nothing like we do on Anna Maria. We're doing it daily during red tide events there, where it's more like weekly or bi-weekly on Longboat, but Anna Maria has more public access, so that's kind of the way it goes. But that has gone a long way towards mending the relationship. They needed a roundabout at Broadway and Gulf of Mexico Drive, and the county has helped to expedite that with the help of the MPO. Thank you, Commissioner Baugh. And so, we've thrown a little over a million towards that, I believe, 1.3, towards that project, so that's moving along quickly. And there was a death at that location, that's why it's a traffic calming, traffic calming device is what's needed there. So, we have done some things to mend fences, and then the last thing she brought up was a discussion of a community education center, and to be blunt, I'm trying to get the school district, since we have kind of done, you know, some things, and we are, you know, providing services to Longboat, I'm trying to get the school district to, to pay for all the programming and the operational costs of that, and then perhaps the county just provides, if you all are willing, a space and a shopping center, basically, because there's not a lot, you're not going to buy land on Longboat, but there is a shopping center that's open to having it, and it's in a good location on, on the key in Manatee County. So maybe we could provide the space if, if the school district is willing to provide and pay for all the programming. Personally, I think, like, see the school district pay for all of it, $36 million and seven kids. Seems like that could be kind of their contribution to education on Longboat Key. So anyway, that's, that's the update for everybody on the history of Longboat Key and where we are now. Commissioner Baugh. We'll go with Commissioner Cruz, then Commissioner Baugh.
I'll be quick, because you kind of said it. I was, you know, the transit out there on Longboat is something I've been focused, well, transit as a whole is something I've been focusing on, and we are going to talk about it when we have our joint meeting with Sarasota County. It's ridiculous that we can't get a bus line going up and down one town out on the island. We have a proof of concept with Route 99 line that goes downtown Bradenton, downtown Sarasota. We have some issues with that right now as well, because we've made our transit free, and they increased the price of their transit, so we got buses that say no free rides on them right now. So transit is going to be a topic of conversation, and I assure you that the transit up and down Longboat will be part of that conversation, and then hopefully we can work something out so we don't have the awkwardness of two transit lines on one island.
And I'll make sure that Longboat, all of the council and the mayor are invited to that meeting. Obviously, not to participate, but probably no group has more interest in seeing the two counties, you know, discuss things than Longboat Key. Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to add to the history of LBK, it actually goes back before 2020, when some of our new commissioners were elected. It really has been an issue over the years, for many years. Manatee County was not donating or helping in any way, shape, or form to LBK, and it wasn't because of the commission. We didn't, to be honest, I was on the board, I didn't even realize it. You know, you're going every day, and you're doing your job, and you're in your district, and you're working, and you don't realize that, and then it was brought to our attention. And we, to be honest, it's when we were in the process of changing, and I think you'll probably remember this, county administrators, before Cherry Corrie, back before that, I won't mention any names, but that was, there was a conflict there. And so, anyway, we made that change and started trying to work with LBK and get things done, and Commissioner Van Austinbridge has done a lot, no doubt. It's very much appreciated by the board members, because we really need to have that relationship. And it's not that the board didn't want it, it just, we didn't even realize that it wasn't happening. So, thank you for being here this morning, and just know that you do have the board's support. Thank you.
And soon, you can go to Sarasota County and tell them you want to annex into Manatee.
And ask them what they're doing.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you so much, commissioners. I think we are at items removed from consent, is that right? Yes. Oh, citizen, we're going to go to consent first. Citizen comment on consent agenda, minus item six. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to make public comment on today's consent agenda? Any items on consent, with the exception of item number six? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close citizen comment on consent. We'll entertain motions on consent. It's coming up. There you go. We have a motion to approve consent by Commissioner Ron, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Thatcher. We have held public comment, there's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, today's consent agenda passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right, then we're going to move to items that were removed from consent. Commissioner Thatcher removed item number six. Commissioner Thatcher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I saw item number six, and I was thinking, because it says there, "Approval of the revised B.O.C.C. committee assignments." I just don't remember doing that in the past, and then it just seems, I don't know what, if anything, changed on those committee assignments since you made them. I mean, they're kind of your appointments. I thought that was your prerogative, I don't know why we're voting on it.
It is. Obviously, I, if commissioners make requests, I attempt to, you know, make them happy however I can. So Commissioner Baugh had a request, I'll pass the floor over to her.
I was the alternate on a couple of items, and to be honest, I've got my hands pretty full this year, being the chairman of the MPOAC and the chairman of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and so I was afraid that it might come up for the two other items that I was an alternate on, that I might not be able to cover it if need be, because I'd be tied up, because those two committees are very active and take a lot of my time. And so I'd ask the chair to please redesignate that. So that's why it's on the agenda, that was my doing.
Yeah, she just wanted to be removed as the alternate, so Commissioner Bearden and I bit the bullet, and, and of course, she picked the two that you had to travel the furthest for.
No, that's not true. I go to Orlando and Tampa all the time.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, this just came, this came about, was it last year or year before, where there was a discussion on whether or not the chair had unilateral right to pick anybody for any chair position, and we kind of all agreed, I think during one of the rules and regulation sessions, that at the very least, the board would just agree to vote on the collective schedule, just so everyone had a say in it, and because technically, a majority of us could override anything the chair does. So, I forgot if it was last year or year before, we decided just to throw that on the agenda each year. I think this is only on there because of the modification.
It is. That was my doing.
Yeah, so the board, the chair sets the committee assignments, and then the board approves, and since I was making changes, I felt it was prudent to put it on consent for the board to approve the changes as well. All right, so we have a motion to approve item number six by Commissioner Thatcher, thank you, sir, and a second by Commissioner Ron. We'll hold public comment at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on item number six, which is the revised committee assignments on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, we can cast our votes now. Madam Clerk, item number six passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, we will then move on into advertised public hearings, presentation upon request. We'll start with development services, item number 40, which is approval and execution of LDA-22-01, Local Development Agreement for Lake Flores. It's a quasi-judicial matter. Nicole Knapp is probably here.
She is here.
Yes, she is. Yes, ma'am, come on down, if anyone would like a presentation.
No.
And would anyone like a presentation? This is, Lake Flores is District 3, Cortez Road, 75th Street, just so you know where we are.
One of the most beautiful.
District 3 is the most beautiful.
No.
Yes. Mr. Clegg, sir.
We do need to do swearing in, in case anybody wants to provide public comment to the board on it, they need to be sworn, because it's quasi-judicial.
Do we first see if anyone wants to give public comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, however you like to do it.
So, no one's requesting a presentation? Is anyone requesting a presentation?
No.
Okay, no one's requesting a presentation. Is there anyone from the public? We're open public comment now. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Mrs. Knapp, don't say anything, because you're not sworn, and we'll entertain motions. Commissioner Cruz has made a motion to approve, and that's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. We've held public comment, no one on the board for discussion, we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Knapp, job well done. Item number 41 is property management, adoption of resolution R-23-012, vacating certain roads and alleys within Riverview, JR Edders subdivision Platt in the town of Ellington, Florida, 34222. This is in District 2. Is there anyone who would like a presentation on item number 41? Okay, hearing none, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 41, in the town of Ellington? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. There's a motion to approve item number 41 by Commissioner Ballard, has been seconded by Commissioner Thatcher. We've held public comment, no commissioners are on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, item number 41 passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. We'll then move on to community and veterans affairs, item number 42, adoption of resolution R-23-038, authorizing submission of the Home ARP allocation plan as part of the substantial, yup, substantial amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan. Presentation scheduled. Who is here to present?
Hi, Mr. Chair, my name is Julia Viera, I'm the Community Development Project Manager. Here with me, I have Amanda Warner, she's our consultant, and she is here to present our, about our Home ARP allocation plan.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, my name is Amanda Warner, I'm a planner with Wade Trim, assisting the county in the development of the Home ARP allocation plan. I do have a PowerPoint presentation.
person on the job. Okay, we're live. Here we go.
All right, thank you. So, so again, this is a presentation regarding the Home ARP allocation plan. This is a substantial amendment to the county's fiscal year 2021 annual action plan to incorporate Home ARP funds received from, from the federal government. Next slide, please. Oh, do I have it? Okay. Oh, perfect. All right, just as a reminder, the community, the Community and Veterans Services Department administers federal funding received through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide community improvements through public services and public facilities that benefit low and moderate income residents. The American Rescue Plan, which is the ARP portion of the Home ARP name of this grant program, started in March of 2021, when the president signed the American Rescue Plan to address the continued impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So this funding allocates approximately $2.3 million in Home ARP funding to Manatee County, and that's under the Home Investment Partnerships Program, that's the home part of the name of the program. And again, as I mentioned, that funding has to be allocated via a substantial amendment to the Fiscal to the fiscal year 2021 annual action plan for CDBG, home, and ESG. So there are several eligible activities under this grant program. First off, affordable rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, non-congregate shelters, and then nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance. Additionally, there's a portion of the funds that's available for administration and planning. Those last two, nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance and administration and planning, those have caps associated with them. There's a 5% cap on the operation and capacity building assistance, and then a 15% cap on the administration and planning. The rest of the funding is available for those first four eligible activities listed. So just know that the balance of the funds is available for those other funding, or those other eligible activities. There are several qualifying populations under this grant program. It's a little bit different from regular home or regular CDBG in that the populations are limited specifically to persons that are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Also, persons fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, stating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. Persons at greatest risk of housing instability. So we're really looking at persons earning less than 30% of area median income, or in some cases, less than 50% of area median income, and that are also at risk of homelessness. And then veterans or families of veterans that meet those other criteria. So this is a very specific program targeted to address homelessness directly. So the substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2021 annual action plan, that has a specific required process through HUD. This is what HUD requires of the county to amend that plan. First of all, it requires that we hold consultations, a public hearing, a 15-day public comment period. And then we have to go through a specific template of a planning process. So we have to identify the qualifying populations in the county. So what are those populations? Where are they? And the quantity and needs of those populations. Evaluate the unmet needs or the gaps in housing, shelter services, et cetera, for those populations, and determining the planned uses and beneficiaries of the home ARP funds. So we have to go through those steps in order to amend the plan. So this was our schedule for the project. So we started in December by holding those required consultation meetings. I'll go into those a little bit further. And then in December and February, or excuse me, December through February, we started developing the draft home ARP allocation plan. We held a public comment period starting on February 13th and then ending today. And then today, we're having the required public hearing with you. And then if the plan is approved, we hope to submit by early to mid-March, just understanding that there is a deadline of March 31st of this year to submit the plan. So that's the cutoff for the last date that HUD is accepting the home ARP allocation plan. So we held two consultation needs assessment forums. Those were in December. One was on December 13th, the other was on December 14th. Those were held online and virtually, so that organizations could attend. One was held in the afternoon and the other was held in the morning. Our participation in that primarily consisted of the continuum of care for the Suncoast Partnership to End Homelessness, their member agencies and organizations, and then other housing and public service providers. We had about 19, almost 20 individuals attend, and they were representing about 11 different organizations. So the 15-day public comment period, which started on February 13th and ended today, was advertised. It was publicly noticed, and that plan was available. The draft home ARP allocation plan was available on the county's website. There was also a physical copy was available at the Manatee County Community and Veterans Services Department for viewing. During the comment period, we did receive one comment, which was added to your packet. That was regarding the need for HUD housing and affordable housing. And then additionally, during the comment period, we met with the Florida Housing Coalition, who provided us with more granular homeless data, so a little bit more detailed data. And that information, along with that comment received, will be added to the summary of comments and recommendations in the document. So that will be added as support for the home ARP allocation plan. The public hearing, as I mentioned, is what we are doing currently. So that is to review and accept any comments on the plan today. So several priority needs were identified. These were needs identified by the agencies in attendance at those consultations meetings. So we had supportive services, for example, multiple wraparound services for homeless and at-risk homelessness, at-risk-of-homelessness populations. So examples of supportive services would be things like case management for homeless prevention. There's a lot of other supportive services that fall under that category also. Rental assistance was a big need, so both short and long-term rental assistance. Financial assistance, these are other gap costs, like utility deposits and other things. Other costs for homeless prevention, that was a big need. Also identified was availability of affordable rental housing. You know, that's a recurring constant need is to increase the inventory and supply of affordable rental housing units. I will say that also in our plan and the data analysis that we collected, aside from the consultation input that we received, as you see on your screen, we also identified that there was a need for shelter beds as well, so for homeless shelter, specifically for individuals, adult individuals as well. So the summary of the draft allocation plan is on your screen. This is the proposed budget that you'll see in the home ARP allocation plan. $300,000 for supportive services, so those are those wraparound homeless prevention services. Acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter, $1 million. And then tenant-based rental assistance, that's that rental assistance that I referenced, a little over $700,000 for that. Additionally, the county staff is proposing to set aside the 15% cap for administration and planning to manage the program, and that's a little over $350,000. So that's the proposed $2.3 million home ARP budget that is in the home ARP allocation plan that you are reviewing today. So the requested actions for this item are to provide a public hearing for residents and for you, the Commissioners, to provide comments and answer questions regarding the home ARP allocation plan. We're also asking for approval of the home ARP allocation plan as part of a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2021 annual action plan that would authorize submission to HUD, and also authorizing any related execution of documents necessary to implement the home ARP allocation plan, including required forms and certifications. And the primary contact for this project from county staff is Julia Viera. Her information is provided on this screen also. And with that, we'll take any questions that anybody has.
Okay, Commissioner Ballard is on the board, ma'am.
Hi, thank you for that presentation. So you detailed uses for the funding. What exactly constitutes a non-congregate shelter? I'm assuming that means that there's private space for the folks who are going to be sheltered.
Yeah, non-congregate shelter are private rooms with bathrooms in the unit.
Okay, so that sounds like, that can typically be pretty expensive compared to a congregate shelter. A million dollars is not necessarily going to go that far in providing non-congregate shelter options, is it?
Well, the idea for all the HUD funds is to leverage additional funding, either from private sources within, you know, the nonprofit capital or other county sources, or their local sources that they might have. So it's, this would be, you know, a million dollars to leverage a lot more.
And so what would be, so what is, I guess, an example of what that non-congregate shelter could actually look like?
Yeah, so an example that we already have locally would be the Salvation Army. They have a family shelter, and that really constitutes what a non-congregate shelter already means, which is a room that the family can stay in, that has a private bathroom for them to, you know, to keep.
Understood. I toured, and I've seen actually what it looks like. I was just wondering if there were any other options, or if that's really the, you know, the extent of what we're looking at.
So that's the requirement, pretty much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the board, and then Commissioner Cruz. Mr. Washington, do, because this is your department, well, they're all your departments now. Do you have, what is the plan for the money? I mean, as far as, is there a location that we have in mind at this point? Because I know that the Salvation Army, for instance, wants to expand. But I've spoken to the mayor and multiple councilwomen, and I don't think it's an option. They're pretty dug in. I don't think they're going to let them expand.
The money's, the million dollars to be set aside for non-congregate shelter, Mr. Chair. You know, that's one of the conversations that we've had as staff. Relocation, you know, site prep, those types of things. As Julia mentioned, it's just an opportunity to leverage the other funds that may be out there. Showing, Manatee County has a buy-in as well.
Okay. So I've had a couple of, sort of, I guess problematic on how you want to word it, but we've had a couple of homeless folks who have been sort of problematic in my district, where I get repeated phone calls from the public. And I've asked, whether it's Chief Bevins or Sheriff Wells, to, you know, I talked to Deputy Jewitt, who's our homeless outreach person. And I've had multiple folks going out there, even in our public safety department. We've had a case manager go out there and speak to them. And so this issue has sort of been front and center for me. And I know it is for Commissioner Ron on a daily basis in his district, probably Commissioner Ballard as well. What keeps coming back is, where am I going to relocate this person to? And Salvation Army obviously has rules, as they should, right? But they don't always have beds either. So one of the issues is, even if we can get them, and they'll agree to go to the Salvation Army, and oftentimes, folks will not, they, some folks are actually homeless by choice, whether it's a mental illness that's playing into that or not. They refuse to go to a shelter. Of course, we run into the issue of, we want to help you, you're refusing help. So now we're stuck in this situation of, I understand you're refusing help. It is a free country, but at the same time, you know, you cannot commit petty crimes. You cannot set up your tent on the sidewalk and just live there. You cannot, you know, there's additional small crimes that come into play, drug use, that sort of thing. Very erratic behavior. So you can't stand in the median and panhandle all day, every day, and live on the tent, live in a tent on the sidewalk. That's really not an option in Manatee County or the city of Bradenton. So it sort of brings us back to, where do we, if they won't go to, the folks won't go to the Salvation Army, where can we bring them? Where can we take them? And Chief Bevins told me that in Pinellas County, the county essentially started and operates a tent city on county land that is pretty out of the way, if you will, is not disturbing neighbors. And it's being run, they have very basic needs, tents, showers, right? Very basic stuff, and it's costing them a pretty minimal amount of money to operate it. Yeah, I haven't been to this place. Commissioner, Chief Bevins wants me to go. I haven't been. Commissioner Ballard wants to dialogue, ma'am.
I've been exploring the same idea. I'm actually, I'm actually going to Pinellas Hope tomorrow morning to tour. So I, I'm exploring this on my own. I'm really glad to hear that you are interested in this issue as well. I think that we need to go further, because I think that we have the opportunity to put in place some more robust ordinances for things like anti-camping, maybe a stronger panhandling ordinance. But we can't do that until we have somewhere for people to go. And this is going to be, I think an option like this is going to be the most cost-effective and the quickest to really close that gap for us.
So Mr. Kleg and I have had long conversations about ordinances. Anti-camping, we did come up with something about loitering on public property with your belongings and yourself. The board has addressed the panhandling, because the ACLU will be on you immediately. It's freedom of speech to ask for money. But we did come up with something that says you can't stand in the median for more than one light cycle. So there's that. And also, I think we have an ordinance that basically reads, it's illegal to lure someone into the roadway to give them something, or something along those lines. So ultimately, that's on the motorist, you know, which is annoying. You know, but, you know, you're the kind-hearted person. No good deed goes unpunished, right? You give somebody five bucks and the cop pulls you over. Mr. Kleg, would you like to speak to ordinances?
Well, I mean, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We do have a, I would describe it as a traffic safety ordinance that restricts activity in intersections. Because you're absolutely right, the courts have ruled that panhandling is protected by the First Amendment. I honestly don't remember what we did with the no camping ordinance. Remember, you asked us to do some work on it, but I thought we were going to have a discussion with the sheriff's office.
We never complete that?
I don't think we did. I don't think we ever adopted that. We told you, you could do it, and you could put something together, but I don't think it ever left the ground.
So could you go ahead and bring us something along? Because you and I discussed it, and I know loitering came up, and we had included belongings. We had discussed it, because we talked, Whitmore brought up, one of the few things I agreed with. She said that if you do take someone, if you do pick someone up on this, and they have all their belongings there, she made a valid point that we need to store the belongings somewhere while they're incarcerated, because it is literally everything they have in the whole world. You know, it may not seem like much to you, but it is everything they have.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. Let me go back and see where we left it. But I think we did need to have a dialogue with MSO about how it would be enforced. And that was one of the issues of concern, was what would you do with their belongings if you did, you know, arrest them?
Right.
So we can go back and look at that, and I'll circle back around with the board. I am curious about the Pinellas thing. Is that something the county is doing, or are they doing that through a nonprofit?
It's done through a nonprofit.
Okay, that makes me much relieved.
Commissioner Ballard, you've got to turn your microphone on if you're going to address.
About that. Catholic Charities is actually, is actually running it through, I believe that, I don't know what the diocese is up there. It's Diocese of St. Petersburg. But I've, I've been in contact with the Diocese of Venice, and they're going to come along with me on the tour of Pinellas Hope.
Okay. Chief Bevins mentioned that there is pasture land, and there is a lot of land up at Port Manatee, at the jail property. The only neighbors would be, obviously, inmates, so probably be a lack of complaints. But in briefly discussing it with Sheriff Wells, he considers himself a neighbor, and he was not high on the idea. There's, wherever, you know, if we seriously consider this, wherever you go to put it, you're going to have immediate reaction of envyism from the people surrounding area. Yeah, so anyway, I did bring it up to him. He didn't seem thrilled about it. You know, perhaps Lakewood Ranch might be another option. Commissioner Ba and I are, you know, always taking jabs. There you go. So the order of the board is Cruz, Ballard, Bearden. Commissioner Cruz, so it's just Cruz and Bearden then. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I have a question. Once we submit this with the funding amounts that we've allocated, are we locked into those funding amounts? Like, for instance, if we put a million dollars towards the shelters, are we committed to utilizing that million dollars towards shelters, or can be reassigned down the road?
No, we may amend the plan after we have actual applications.
Yeah, because when I saw this, that was my concern. It's not inexpensive. A million dollars doesn't get us design work around here. So I understand that the skin in the game, but a million-dollar skin in the game for that is not sufficient to really get that off the ground to the extent we need it. And honestly, the second issue, always with any of these shelters, whether it's Salvation Army or otherwise, is transitional housing only works if you have the ability to transition them someplace. And I had this conversation yesterday. Right now, we do not. So you go to Salvation Army, even if you pass their questions and their tests and their thresholds, you're there for 10 days, and then you're out, and you haven't transitioned anyplace. You're just back to where you started a week and a half later. So there's a lot of good intention there. I do know about the tent city I talked to Deputy Jewitt about. I know she was interested. I think it's an interesting idea, because if everyone's in a similar location, that's where you can focus wraparound services, that's where you could focus security. It's putting people someplace where you can get them the services they need, to the extent they want the services. I mean, you can't force that upon anybody. The question really is where you put it. You know, if you put it up by the port, well, there's no employment center there, there's limited transit up there. It's like, yes, you have cheap land, you have less people complaining about it being next to them. But how many, honestly, how many homeless people are going to go up to the port and live out in the middle of nowhere where they can't panhandle? They can't, you know, get to an employment center, go to the library for internet, so forth, or either putting in substantial infrastructure up there to facilitate what's effectively camp city, or you're just not going to get the utilization. So that's the devil in the details, is balancing the location where it makes sense with a place that's not going to cause problems for the surrounding neighborhood. So, you know, if we can move this, it's great. That was my concern. The million dollars for a shelter didn't seem like it was going to get us anywhere relative to our needs. Obviously, if Salvation Army had the ability to expand. Obviously, if Salvation Army had the ability to expand. Now, if you double, triple, quadruple the hotbeds or something, you know, that's, that's a good use of money, but you need to have the capacity to do that, which doesn't sound like we, we may. Otherwise, I, I thought the supportive services and the, the rental assistance probably gave us more bang for the buck in the near term. I hate just burning money because once, once the services are done, once the, the rent is paid, you have nothing to show for it as opposed to a shelter. But in today's market, especially with seniors, I mean, that, that's really where, where our near homeless issue is right now. Not to say everyone's not burdened and having the same issue, but there's a lot of seniors on fixed incomes. And while wages are going up, not as fast as rent, but wages are still going up. But seniors on fixed income, that's not the case. If anything, their fixed income is going down in some cases, but rents are still going up. So I, I think that's the, the near term where we get a better bang for the buck. But again, you don't have any assets to show for it afterwards. So, you know, I, I like the plan. I, I like where we're headed relative to this. I like the fact that Commissioner Ballard is coming to look at the tent city. I've talked to a number of the commissioners up in Pinellas County. I was on a few housing panels with them in the past 12 months, and we discussed this. It's, it's an interesting concept. I'm certainly open to discussing it. But as long as we can move these, these funds around, I'm good with this plan.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go up there as well in the next couple of weeks and check it out, and I, maybe some of you will as well. Not to speak for the mayor, but I hear, you're, you're right about a lot of the points you make, Commissioner Cruz, including the sort of, the tough ability to get to and from the port property. But not to speak for the mayor, but I can almost guarantee you that if this, if you would commit to moving it out of the city of Bradenton and putting it up there, that the city of Bradenton would pay for the transit to run up there and back. Of course they would. Yeah. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I had a, I'm sure you all did too at some point or another, had a conversation with Hope Pathways. You know, what they presented kind of made sense to me. You know, they have a lot of different organizations that are kind of working together that are kind of bridging that gap. And there's also, we have to look at how can we track the situation? And with applications and things like that to see if they're coming from?
We have two case managers on staff.
Okay. Oh, that's awesome. And so I know that with certain applications that are, that are presented and things of that nature, to be able to track where homeless are coming from. Because like, again, I don't want to be a magnet for Manatee County, not at all. But we do know that there's about 30% families, 30% seniors, and then 30% of the people that just want to be homeless. Right? They don't, they don't want to be housed. So I think with the rental assistance, that would allow us to give, get enough data to collect to see what we can project in the future, moving forward, and, and give us the, the necessary data to know what needs to be spent on a program such for homelessness. I don't know. That's just kind of throwing it out there to see what, what your, what your thoughts are, the board's thought.
No, you're right. We, we do have two, say about six months ago, the board approved two case manager positions, and we have been tracking that. And in my recent conversation with the sheriff, he, he pointed out to me that in the last, like, maybe month, maybe 30 days, perhaps it's seasonal issue, I don't know, but there has been a, a major influx of transients from out of this area who have no connection to Manatee County that have suddenly come in. And they have been, you know, because we've been, you know, Joy Jewitt, our deputy who does homeless outreach, she knows every homeless camp, right? She knows the vast majority of the homeless, you know, the, the sort of people who are plagued with homelessness or have chosen homelessness in the county through her interactions. And, you know, of course, she and the case managers are the ones reporting back to him that, you know, they're picking up and having interactions with a lot of people recently who are not from the area. So that is tracked as best as it can be tracked. Commissioner Baugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whose district is the port in?
James.
Is it James? Satcher? Okay, because I know, you know, we've got the enterprise zone out there too with all the land that we're trying to do something with for the port.
Job's coming.
At any rate, you're right. This is a great conversation. And I, I got to tell you, I mean, we have Salvation Army that does a great job. We have Turning Points that does a great job. But the problem is, and Commissioner Cruz was right, and so is Commissioner Bearden, and everything I've heard has been accurate. The problem is, again, some people just want to be homeless. And so there's not a lot that we can do about that. They don't want to be in a camp. They don't want housing. They want to be left alone. There is a huge, and I, I haven't heard this mentioned by anyone this morning, there's a huge mental health problem that is out there. And I can tell you, I mean, I have, I have walked around, Commissioner Satcher, I know that your wife has done this too. I've walked around in homeless areas at night giving out food and talked to some of them. And there is no firm solution for everyone. And, and the problem is, and I heard Commissioner Van Austin Ridge, you said it, you know, we are getting more and more into Manatee. There's a reason for that. Because they realize that things in Manatee County are pretty good. So it is a huge problem. And I would suggest, and, and you know, Manatee County only has a certain amount of money, and of course, we know we're being pulled pretty tight right now. But we have a lot of money that goes out every year to nonprofits. And we need to look and really figure out where, what we want to, I'm trying to figure out how to put it. We need to figure out what we want to do and, and where we feel the best need is. The needs of yesterday are different than maybe today.
Right.
You know, things change. So even though we don't have a lot of money to do with as we might want, we can look at that and decide what we feel the biggest problem is. I am concerned, and I was reading an article the other day about LA in California and the problems that they're having. And I don't want to end up, Manatee County, looking like LA. And I think we're kind of hidden there with, with where we are today. So it is a huge problem. People need help, but not everybody wants help. So we've got to figure out how we handle both sides of that issue and, and figure out the needs that we need to meet. And so we need to look at our nonprofits and figure out how we can best help those that need that help, especially right now. You know, money's tight. George, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cruz brought it up, seniors. It's a real problem. I hear from a lot of seniors. And yes, some in Lakewood Ranch, imagine that, Mr. Chairman. You know, there, there's people that are having issues, financial issues everywhere. So it's a, it's a problem. And it's not just people, you know, that have drug problems or mental health issues. I mean, some people just can't help with what's happening right now. So, and I was joking, by the way, Mr. Chairman. I hope you know that.
Oh, you're kidding.
I was kidding. So anyway, maybe somehow we can find a solution, but it's definitely a problem that we need to take seriously and find. So Commissioner Ballard, thank you for taking this on.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ron and then Satcher. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, thank you for recognizing that District Four has a lot of the homelessness here in Manatee County. And it's, I think it's just because we are the urban core in District Four, and it just, the homelessness gravitates to those areas. First off, Pinellas County has done a very good job in managing their homelessness. They've been pretty aggressive about it. So they have a very good homelessness program up there that I think we should, instead of reinventing the wheel, let's see what their wheel looks like and work with, uh, work with their folks up there on their homelessness problem. Also, on the rental assistance that this program will provide. You know, to Commissioner Baugh's point, we have economic homeless today, which a majority are families, which are living in their cars during the week. Kids are going to school. They're still working. And then on the weekends, they're living in a hotel just to be able to get showers and some type of stability. So I hope when we look at the rental assistance, that we've come up with some type of prioritization to where we can look at maybe helping families get out of their cars and get in some rental assistance. But I like the program. I like that the, the dollars can be reallocated, reallocated to somewhere else with that. But a million bucks, I mean, like Commissioner Cruz said, we can't get plans drawn for a million dollars in this county anymore. But I do like the program. I think it'll help us out. But I would just suggest that we look at Pinellas, look at their program and go from there. But thank you, Commissioner Ballard, for going up and looking at the tent city. I saw that the other day on the news, and I thought it was a pretty good idea for them. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about, as you look at the documents, it would be the third one down. So the draft, Manatee County Home ARP allocation plan, and then it's the template. So as I look at that, it seems like what I read and then our conversation is different from what it, you know, the way I am seeing that template. So could you just explain it to me as far as how, is this the final deal? Or would this change as you allocate the money? How, how would that work? Because it's showing a lot of zero percents on the things we're talking about helping. And then it's showing a lot of money going to things that I don't know if those are our priorities or not, so.
Could, could you provide a specific example of a page or?
It's page 15 out of 22. So if you get to the documents.
Oh, yes.
It'd be the one that's the 22-page list. There was also a corresponding page in your presentation, but I didn't catch the page number of it as well. But when I saw that and I was like, that's not what they're saying. I'm sure I'm missing it. So just a little more explanation, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely. So the, the Home ARP allocation plan that you're looking at is a template format that is mandated by HUD. So we have to use this template to plug everything in. The table on page 15 provides a breakdown of the eligible activities under the Home ARP program. So that list, starting with supportive services and ending with administration and planning, are all the eligible activities under the Home ARP, the Home ARP program. Through consultation with the nonprofit organizations, the continuum of care, et cetera, we received information that would support a priority need of supportive services as well as tenant-based rental assistance. So those are the budgets that are provided there. Additionally, the, the data in the document, this is aside from the consultation that we received, but when we looked at the, the data regarding shelter beds available in the homeless population and other information, we also identified the need for, for the shelter as well. So county staff looking at, and I don't want to speak for county staff, but my understanding is that looking at the combination of the consultation received and the data analyzed, it was narrowed down to these three essentially priority needs. The items that are shown as zero are not being proposed to be funded. So for example, the development of affordable rental housing, the nonprofit operating and nonprofit capacity building assistance are not proposed to be funded. That's why they're showing zero percent next to those. And then you'll see the last column on the right where it has a 5%, 5%, and 15%. Those are the HUD mandated caps on the expenditures of those particular activities. So the county is proposing to spend 0% on nonprofit operating, nonprofit capacity building assistance, although they could take up to 5%, but proposing zero for those.
So as I look at the numbers on the left underneath the funding amount column, so your total's 2.3 million. Of that, when we see the 354, 354,000, is that what is basically staying with us? And I'll just go ahead and let you know my concern. My concern, you know, the bigger something gets, the more inefficient it generally gets. And so if some people feel like, you know, nonprofits are inefficient, and some of them could be very inefficient, but boy, you want to go worse than that is growing government. So I just want to make sure of this 2.3, that we're not planning on growing Manatee County government, 2.3 million. You're saying we're going to be giving away the 300, the 1 million, and the 708. And then we're going to keep 354 for administering or administration over that program going out into the community. Is that correct? Am I getting that now?
Correct. So administration planning, that's set aside, which the county has the option to take up to 15%. They're proposing to take the full 15% is for all of the administration of that grant program. So even with, you know, identifying sub-receipients to, to execute the, the balance of the funds, there's a lot of paperwork involved, a lot of reporting, et cetera, for those federal grant programs. And so that's the set aside to manage the overall program.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, and I just would like to add to that, that the, the template for the funding, we also have other funding available that we already provide for those items that are here chosen to be zero or, you know, at this time are zero. So we do have other HUD grants that provide assistance for housing development and for nonprofit capacity building.
That explanation is perfectly clear, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I understand now much better.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So doing a little bit of calculation here, roughly, if we say we did rental assistance for six months, right? That would roughly cover about 83 families for six months. I mean, would you agree with that number? About 80, 60 to 80 families.
Yeah.
Right? However, if I, if we look at, let's just say, providing container homes. Container homes run about $75,000 apiece. We could roughly get about 20 of those container homes in a specific location, which at that point in time, we would be able to provide the housing for these families, right? Once we have these homes established, Mr. Washington, do we have the ability to get more federal funding to fund, you know, the services needed to be provided for, you know, these container homes or whatever they might be? Does that, does that open up another window for federal funding to come in to the county for that?
Mr. Chair, my dialogue.
Yes, sir.
That's a yes or no answer to that. Obviously, when you deal with the feds, they obviously want to take a look at what you have done in your local area to combat whatever problem you're coming in for grant dollars. So not every program that we currently have in-house could help get us to where you've, you're speaking on. But there, there are other grant dollars that are out there from the feds to help support those types of things. My experience has been that the feds typically look at supportive services, and that's why it's always going to be one of our recommendations to the board. But there are dollars out there to pretty much close any gap related to transitional housing currently. Tens of millions of dollars.
If I could dialogue, Mr. Chair. Something that I have been thinking a little bit about with, with regard to this potential temporary or tent city type, type place is in addition to the tents, maybe there could be a smaller component of container homes, maybe, you know, five to 10 for families who, who need that supportive service within, within the larger area. So that way, they have the privacy. They have something that's a little bit more comfortable and more permanent. And it adds, adds capacity. So I, I don't necessarily like the idea of just building a permanent container home community that people are going to live in forever. But, but I think as a, as a portion of a larger transitional area, I think, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, if I might jump in real quick, I, I think transitionally speaking, yes, I think you would get support from the board on that. And essentially, you know, there, this, put it this way, this board is a pretty good representation of the, the people who sent us here that we represent. We're a pretty blue collar. We're fairly conservative. We're Christians. We, we want to help people who genuinely need help in this county. We're, we're open-hearted and open-minded people. So if there's someone who needs a hand up, as this board as a whole truly wants to do that. Commissioner Cruz and Baugh are correct. It's a very complicated situation. It's not as cut and dry as it seems. Your deal, every, every person's situation is unique. So we're, we're trying to sort of tackle that challenge simultaneously. But we are also not going to give away the farm. And as Commissioner Bearden stated, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to make it like enticing to come to Manatee County so that we end up drawing in folks like, like what Los Angeles has done. They, they threw $500 million at, because they had this initiative to solve the homeless problem, and they threw $500 million at it. And five years later, they threw 1.2 billion at it, and they have more homeless than, than they can fathom. I mean, the, the more they throw at it, the bigger the problem becomes. So we are going to tackle it from a pragmatic standpoint as well. And I think that pragmatism is best explained to say that if, if you're a Manatee County resident that's fallen on hard times and, and truly needs a hand up, we are here and this, this community will help you. If you're someone who is choosing to be homeless and choosing to commit small crimes, and if your intention is to panhandle and not seek help or services and just simply live on the street and abuse drugs and be a problem for society, then Manatee County is not the place for you. And, and I know that that's, that's kind of a hard, difficult line to say to people that they're not welcome. But, but ultimately, I, I think I speak for the board when I. they're not welcome, but ultimately I think I speak for the board when I, when I say that. If you need help truly and want help, we will help you. If you're, if you're just here to be a problematic person in society.
Break the law.
And break the law, correct, and not be part of our community, a productive part of our community, then this isn't the place for you.
Right. Well said.
Commissioner Bearden, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I, I think the, you know, as everybody stated, you know, it's definitely an issue that, that we definitely want to tackle. And I, and I know that not one way is the best way, but I think us all coming together, putting our, bringing Housing Group together and figuring out a solution, you know, is going to be the best way to approach this and tackle this issue, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard, you're on the board.
No.
No? That's okay, I can take you off. So then let's, as before we hold a public comment and a vote on this, can we just sort of say that our next regular meeting is on the twenty-eighth of March? So why don't each of us, in our own way, wherever we feel is necessary, research Pinellas County, look into Pinellas County the best we can, and come back on the twenty-eighth to discuss this again? Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, so that, that will be our intentions.
I believe we have a work session on housing coming up even before that.
Even before that? It's on housing or homelessness?
It's affordable housing.
Affordable housing, okay. And they are interlinked, but.
Homelessness is kind of the most extreme version of like of affordable housing.
Well, that's fine, we can, we can catch up. So, so let's catch up at that work session, but then maybe on the twenty-eighth, be prepared to come back and take some kind of action, or at least discuss action on the twenty-eighth?
I.
If we don't create a deadline for action, Commissioner Cruz.
No, I hear you, but I want to see if the, do we know the timeline? We, we engaged Florida Housing Corp. to, to put together a report similar to what they did for Sarasota, correct?
Correct.
Do we know the timeline of when that is supposed to come back, at least in draft form? Is that going to be back in time for this meeting?
In draft form, I think we have something, but they're going to be here for that, given the updates on all that.
Okay, yeah, because last year, last year we, we authorized payment to Florida Housing Corp. to run a, a full survey report, things that we all discussed we need up here, to, to run the report from Manatee County. So we may have credible information, and there's other groups like HOPE that's doing a similar things here. So we may be able to get some real concrete information for a discussion on the twenty-first.
Okay. That sounds like a plan going forward, then. Commissioner Ron.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to stature you at the last minute, but one quick question. In the funding we have here, is there any funding set us to aid for teen homelessness, which is on the rise exponentially every day? And we know these teens are becoming homeless, and they're committing crimes, they're getting trafficked, all that type of stuff. So in the rental pool there of seven hundred and some odd thousand, is there anything for teens, to assist teens in that, or is it all for just homelessness in general and we kind of categorize them in one box?
So one other thing we could explore, and I mentioned that, if you receive applications for this funding that are targeted towards.
Applications targeted towards youth or families with youth, that's definitely an eligible use, and many other communities have targeted the funds towards that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Ron, Chad showed, Chairman of the School Board is impressively knowledgeable on teen and youth homelessness in the county. I would reach out to him if I were you to get some info.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's open this up to public comment. There are no other commissioners on the board. Is there anyone, now that we've literally discussed this to death, is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on, ultimately, it's, it's the Home ARP application plan? Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on anything really the board's discussed in regard to this, this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. There is a motion to approve the item by Commissioner Cruz. It has been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, the item is approved unanimously by a vote of six to zero with Commissioner Thatcher absent. Okay, it is ten thirty, we're going to take our regularly scheduled ten thirty recess. We're in recess for ten minutes.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're moving right along through our agenda today. Regular meeting of the board, and we're on to item number forty-three. This was originally placed on consent. I asked that it be removed from consent because I felt that it should be highlighted, the work that this board is doing to expand the capacity of the roads in this county. We're really going above and beyond. It's the largest sort of capital improvement project that I think the board has really ever undertaken in the history of this board. We're right around $700 million in road expansion right now, roads and bridges. And this one, I thought, was relevant. It's on Canal Road. It's kind of a, you know, it's a road that is essentially a failed road at this point, ditches on both sides, and it's overcapacity. So we're trying to four-lane this road, and it was an easement that had to be purchased, and it came out to over $900,000 for one property owner because it was an industrial site and they lost parking and whatnot. So it wasn't anything that I disagreed with. It was just something that I felt that should be highlighted in a public meeting. Anytime we're spending almost $1 million on one sliver of property, I feel like we should at least acknowledge that to taxpayers and let them know that we've done it. Commissioner Cruz is on the board to speak, sir.
Yeah, thanks. I just had a quick question relative to actually what you just said. We got an appraisal on this? Was this appraisal done as a commercial appraisal? Is that why? I mean, this is a, there's no way the land under this is worth what we're paying, but I did notice on the map that we're taking a big chunk of their parking, that's the front ditch along Canal. Is that how this appraisal got to where it is? Because we're putting them in a disadvantage commercially relative to removal of their parking?
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator Washington, County Attorney Clegg, Charles Matter Property Acquisition. Yeah, to your point, the land value is like $7.25 a square foot, but if, as you can see by, I believe the location map is up there, there's way more to this than just the land. As you can see, they're losing all their parking. So to your point, you have the land value, you have the improvements in the area of the acquisition, as well as the cost to cure, which is essentially a whole new parking lot for these folks. So that's why you're at the $903,000 figure.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's what it was, because when I saw that price versus the 9,000 square feet worth of land or something, it just didn't make logical sense. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's tough to swallow sometimes. I hear some people sighing, but I thought it was at least relevant for the board to see it and discuss it amongst ourselves before we move forward. We'll open that up to public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time to speak on item number forty-three, which is the execution of contract for sale and purchase of parcel 113 between Manatee County and Palmetto, 1105 LLC, for property located at 1105 16th Avenue East, Palmetto, Florida 34221, and Canal Road? Anyone like to come forward to speak on that item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. We'll entertain motions. There's no one on the board. Commissioner Ballard, it's her district, has made a motion to approve, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. Cast our votes at this time. We're casting our votes at this time. Maybe someone's conflicted on what to do here.
Who hasn't voted?
Somebody hasn't voted.
I have.
There we go. And it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk. It was a contentious one, but we got through. So it passes seven to zero. Okay, we're going to move on to the good stuff here. So we are now on items number forty-four and number forty-five, which will be opened together. These items are utilities items. Forty-four is the authorization for the designation and creation of three service areas for districts for residential and commercial collection of solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard trash in unincorporated Manatee County. Item number forty-five is execution of the solid waste recyclables and yard waste collection franchise agreement. Who is here? This is a presentation scheduled. Who is here from staff?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Washington, I am Courtney DePaul. I'm the deputy county administrator, and I oversee utilities. I'm accompanied by Evan Pilachowski, who is our utilities director, and we've also got Jacob Erickson from procurement here, and we also have FMD. So we're opening the two items together because item number forty-four has to be approved before item forty-five can be approved, if that's the will of the board. But I wanted to give a little bit of background. And so, as you know, utilities and procurement have been soliciting, evaluating, and negotiating the county's newly proposed solid waste franchise hauler contract since April of 2022. In a perfect world, this contract would have been thoroughly communicated to the board and the general public over the past two years and even beyond in most jurisdictions. But that was not the case in this situation. As a result of the lack of communication and accelerated timeline, staff was directed to include as many options as possible in the request for proposal, the RFP, making negotiations and the after-the-fact communication with the board and public very burdensome on staff. With direction from the county administration and our presumed direction from the board, we as staff negotiated this contract to the absolute best of our abilities. The negotiation resulted in the development of two contracts, one with FCC and one with Waste Pro, who are here today, which are pending your approval today. And so with that, if I could pull up the presentation, I'm going to go through some of the slides. To start, we're going to go give an overview of procurement. And with that, I do have Jake behind me. So he's going to go through a little bit of what we did. As you all know, this is arguably the largest contract that Manatee County has, and so with that, as would be expected, the negotiation was a longer, more complex.
Yes, very long process. Thank you, everybody, Commissioners, Commissioner County Attorney, Mr. County Administrator. So back in 2019, we began planning for the RFP, and the purpose of the RFP was to secure new waste hauler contracts. The existing contract expires on September 30th of 2023. In April of 2022, we issued the solicitation, and we received their responses back in June of 2022. It went through the evaluation committee process where the proposals were scored and ranked, and then we moved forward with the negotiations. Over the course of the negotiations, between September and December 14th of 2022, the county had had fifteen separate negotiation meetings to generate further savings, and ultimately the contract is here for your approval or denial. Thank you.
So with that, we talk about why prices were expected to increase, that we had communicated, and then we give a recap in the presentation of just the briefing history. Again, in a perfect world, these briefings would have been going on for the last two years and really had buy-in from the public already and the Board of County Commissioners. But as you can see, the accelerated timeline, you know, we really didn't have that much time to do all of this. And so September 2022 is really when it all started with communication to the board. Just a recap of some decision points that were made by the board on January 31st, going through the four service level options that were discussed. And then I go through just a little bit more details with key decision point one being once-per-week automated garbage with a 96-gallon cart. Another major decision was the number of haulers. The board had decided upon two haulers, and that, of course, reduces the overall risk. And, you know, if there's, in the case of service issues or storms, it gives a little bit more flexibility and fulfills the original intent of the RFP. You've got also key decision point three to reduce residential costs even further. The board decided upon creation of a user fee system for bulk items, removal of the free annual service, limiting yard waste to four cubic yards, and then not including the RFID readers on trucks, as both haulers had already agreed to do service verification using Third Eye instead. And then key decision point four was, of course, an even split among the different areas among the two haulers. And so even though the units, as you can see, are a little bit different in the yellow, with FCC potentially getting a few less units than Waste Pro, we believe that gap would close over the duration of the contract due to the fact that the service areas that FCC are in are the fastest-growing residential service areas. And then, as you can see, the monthly household cost, which is the average of the two rates, was $14.22, and that would be increased from the $9.24 that we pay the haulers today. And that just shows how the North County is increasing size at a faster pace. And that's all I had. And so at this time, staff is here to answer any questions that you may have about procurement or the haulers.
Okay, we don't have any Commissioners on the board to speak at this time. Commissioner Cruz has made a motion to approve. No one has seconded that at this time. Since no one's on the board, let's open this to public comment. Commissioner Satcher.
You've got to stop. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had asked for some documents, and you got those back to me as far as what we're seeing in other counties, but I was just going to give you an opportunity to address that if you wanted.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So we had our solid waste consultant, KCI, gather some information from jurisdictions, in Florida specifically, to see what they were seeing with a percent increase as their contracts renewed. And so they took contracts that had renewed either in 2021 or 2022. Some of those, to give an example of our increase, from 925, which is the rate that we're paying the hauler today, to the 1422, the proposed rate that we'd be paying the haulers, we're looking at about a little under a 54% increase. I know that what we had talked about at the beginning of this procurement was potentially a 200% increase, and so that 54% is very competitive. What we've seen in other jurisdictions is, for example, Port St. Lucie, who also has a once-a-week service, and they had gone from twice a week to once a week, they saw an increase of 66%, so a little under 66%. And then areas like Lake County also have once-a-week service, saw an increase of almost 108%. And so in comparison, we have one of the lower percents, actually one of the lowest that I saw of the comparable data that we had received of the percent increase. So, you know, I do attribute that to the staff's really hard work in negotiating this contract, and of course, you know, the willingness of the haulers to negotiate.
Commissioner Satcher, anything further? Okay, thank you, sir. So no one else is on the board. We're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward at this time to speak on either item number forty-four or item number forty-five on today's consent agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment at this time. There's still no one on the board for discussion. Commissioner Cruz has made a motion to approve. Is anyone going to second Commissioner Cruz's motion? Okay, Commissioner Cruz, your motion fails for lack of a second, so we're going to take that off, and we should place on the board. But now we have two people on the board to speak, so I'll have you all just hold off on putting a motion on the screen for now. Commissioner Cruz.
I think people need to put themselves on the board instead of just hiding behind not seconding. If you, I mean, nobody's on the board. If you don't like it, that's fine. Everyone's allowed to have their opinion up here. I don't fault anyone for opinion. We're all smart people who have our own briefings, and we talk to our own constituents, and we have our own reasons for approving or not approving anything. But to just completely stay silent and not even explain a rationale, this is on the agenda. It's been on the agenda for ten days. We've all had briefings. We've all had access to, Courtney and Evan and everybody, to get our answers in terms of what this means relative to three service areas versus two, and what this means with these contracts versus not signing these contracts. But nobody's explaining their rationale. This was heavily discussed at a work session. This has been heavily discussed within the utilities department, both these two items now and number forty-six that's coming up next, to move our utility systems forward. And we're running out of time here. As we heard, our current contracts expire in a few months. We need to start moving forward with whomever it is. Now, I don't even care. We just need to have hauler contracts in place, otherwise we're not going to have our garbage picked up. So if people disagree with it, then explain why you disagree with it, so we can give direction to our utilities and our staff, so they can bring us something back that we can vote on, because not having waste hauler contracts is not an option. And these are ones that were heavily discussed, heavily negotiated, and fine-tuned, and this is what's being presented to us by our utilities department as the best option for Manatee County. If this is not the option we like, we need to give some direction. I trust everyone up here who worked very hard to present this to us, that this is the most affordable option and the best option based upon our dialogue with them and their dialogue with, not just these two haulers, but other haulers that narrowed it down. So, you know, I'm trusting our staff. I have seen what the other counties and municipalities have been paying. I see that we're still cheaper than virtually all of them, and I believe they put these contracts in place based upon the direction of this board. So I don't have a problem with it, which is why I made the motion. Obviously, six other people do, otherwise somebody would have seconded it. So I'm just curious, and I think they're curious, so they know what direction to go in the few months we have left in our remaining contract.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clegg, would you like to weigh in?
Can he?
Before we proceed with any further discussion?
Well, I don't know how I'm going to avoid weighing in, because the board's had a decision point today, and it's not an easy one. I want to make sure that, you know, for the benefit of everyone up here, and it's consistent with what you heard in your briefings, but also for the benefit of the public, everyone understands the relationship between items forty-four and forty-five. Forty-four is an item to approve three service areas for solid waste service, and based on the dialogue that my office has had with Mr. Erickson, it's pretty clear that if the board doesn't approve those service areas as presented, then item forty-five, which is the approval of the hauling contracts, has to go back through a resolicitation, because it's a substantial change to what was put on the streets. The numbers that all of the respondents gave us were based on those three service areas. I think in defense of staff, some decision points went by that if it were up to me, that decision on those three service areas would have come to the board a lot sooner.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's not something that the board had input in, but that's something that every staff person involved in this today inherited. It's not a decision any of them made, but they have the, you know, obligation to present it to you. But if you're not going to approve forty-four as proposed, then you're not going to be able to approve forty-five, and some direction, I agree, Commissioner Cruz, needs to be given to staff today. Okay, if we're not going to do this, what do we want to do? And if that's the way the board wants to go, then we can discuss, you know, what are the available options if the board's not comfortable going forward? So that's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, in private, you and I had had conversations about the litigious nature of these items, of these contracts.
Yes, sir.
And limiting, you know, all Commissioners limiting open dialogue at a microphone.
Right.
Is there anything you would like to say? I don't know if you've spoken to them, if they've gotten the same sort of, you know, briefing that I had on that, but if they did, do you want to reiterate that now? Would you like to make those comments public, so people understand why everyone is so tight-lipped at the moment?
Well, I'm always tight-lipped. You know, I'm always careful, but in this case, we have to be very careful. I mean, it is an area where bid protests are common. You see it all the time. I don't think I should say more than that. I think we're, the board needs to be able to make a decision, and it's the board that's in the driver's seat. It's up to the board how you want to handle this. So I'm prepared to talk about options if you don't want to approve this, but you do need to provide some direction of where we're going to go, because it's true, the contracts expire in October, and so we have to make some decision, what are we going to do with this if we're not going to approve what's presented? So that's all I'm comfortable saying at this point.
Okay, that's fine. So I'll just try to, as Chair, give a little direction to the board and just say, whatever it is that you're intending to do, or whatever your desires are, let's just make a clean and crisp statement that's succinct and to the point, and let's all decide where we are right now. I think it's important to note, as Mr. Clegg said, staff did inherit this problem, essentially, and we should recognize how hard they worked on it. However, I don't know that they were handed something that they could be success. I think they were kind of handed a lose-lose situation, in my opinion, and I feel badly that they were handed that. So the order, the speaking order is Baugh, I'll take myself off, Baugh, Satcher, and Bearden. Commissioner Baugh.
Thank you. Yeah, we sit here and listen to Commissioner Cruz, and now you, and all I want to say is thank you to staff for all the hard work that I know you guys put in on this. This is, I don't think our reaction is surprising staff. I mean, they, you knew. So, you know, we do need to give direction, and that's why I was waiting for Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Van Austin Bridge to finish, because you do need direction, and I can only speak for myself, you know, and I'm not going to make a motion on it, but, you know, we need to start over and let the board play a big part in helping you. And Evan, thank you. I mean, you walked into this, so we all know that, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done on this as well. So, you know, we're just going to have to start over. Where that's going to lead us, don't know, but obviously, you can see, we're kind of at a disadvantage here. So that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask the county attorney with your leave, if you mentioned that after this vote, we would discuss options, but, I mean, could we discuss the options now? So we see each, you know, so we see our choices. I don't think anyone watching or having seen any of our previous meetings is going to be under any, you know, impression that any of us are excited about this, so, but if every single option is bad, we have to choose the least bad, so I would like to hear your thoughts on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Satcher, if we're not going to approve new contracts quickly because of the timeframe that we're in at this point, we will need to negotiate extensions with the incumbent contractors while the county reevaluates the purchasing process. I wouldn't say more than that right now, because we can't commit those incumbent contractors to an extension in this meeting. We're going to have to sit down with them and see how long of an extension they're willing to negotiate and at what price. It is unlikely that it's going to be free. In other words, there is going to be some additional cost to us. I am not in a position to say what it will be until we've had that dialogue with them, but I think that would be the next step if the board's not comfortable making the decision that has been offered up to you today by staff. I'm hesitant to say go ahead and pull the trigger on rejecting all proposals at this point, because we haven't had the dialogue with the incumbent contractors to make sure that we can get those extensions, and that's a considerable risk that we'd be taking. So that's my thought, Commissioner Satcher. Does that help?
Yeah, that does help. So if we were to, rather than reject out of hand, but if we were to defer whatever word you...
I would use the word "table" and direct staff to negotiate extensions with the existing incumbent contractors while the county evaluates its purchasing options.
With the point being to not back ourselves into a corner.
Yes, sir.
So if they don't want to come to the table, if they don't want to be rational on an extension, or even generous on an extension, then we...
We have to come back to this decision.
...agree this exactly what we're looking at, could come back before us at a future date, correct?
Yes, sir.
I move, I'll move to table number forty-four.
Well, I can phrase the motion if you would like for the clerk.
Please.
All right, so the motion would be, I move to table this matter for further consideration and to direct staff to negotiate extensions with the incumbent contractors while the county evaluates its purchasing options.
So moved.
I'll second.
Could I add just a comment to that?
Madam Clerk, real quick, we have a motion by Commissioner Satcher to table item number forty-four and forty-five, or do I need to hold those separately, sir?
You could, we can characterize the motion as to table both options, both items.
Okay, so the motion is to table forty-four and forty-five, and to direct staff to begin negotiations for contract extensions with incumbent waste haulers, and has been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. Mr. Clegg.
I want to make it clear for the record that if we are not able to get acceptable extensions with the incumbent contractors, this will be coming back to the board.
Well, I think it comes back to the board regardless.
For this decision to be then revisited, I think it's important that they recognize that.
Sure. Sure.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there, well, we have Bearden and Ballard on the board still. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, looking at the contract, looking at different areas and the pricing in specific areas, I could see where staff worked very hard to negotiate this contract at the lowest rate that they could possibly get, because I know that, you know, with other counties, there's a higher population, and typically, with a higher population, there's a lower cost per user, because, you know, the companies are making a little bit more on the back end. However, I'm willing to pay just a little bit more for an extension, because we're talking about a $500 million contract for the next 10 years, you know?
Let's, let's make sure staff goes into the negotiation with, with plenty of leverage. Let's...
Great, great.
Okay.
No, that's fine, that's fine, but I just wanted, you know, people to know where I stand on this particular matter here, okay? The ones who have the gold have the power, and it's the people who have the power who elected us in this seat. So, we're the ones that are going to make the decision on whether we want to utilize you guys or not. That being said, I would like to see in this negotiation, right, that we have a staggered contract, meaning one, maybe an extension on a couple of years, maybe one's 10 years, one's 12 years, so we don't find ourself in this position ever again, all right, in the future. So, that's one request that I want to bring to staff, that please, when you do do this, make sure that those contracts are staggered for future reference. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioners, in the spirit of being crisp and clean, direction for staff, I feel like one-on-one is the way to do that for the moment, just because of the litigious nature of these things.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ballard.
I just wanted to thank staff for all of the hard work that you've done on this. I know that you were handed a process that was already far into negotiations. I, I was kind of in the same boat, so I, I think that ultimately, we'll, we'll get to a good result, but yeah, I just wanted to, to thank you, because I know, I know you've been working hard for a really long time on it. I'm sorry that we're not there yet.
Thank you, ma'am. No other Commissioners are on the board at this time, so we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on items number 44 or 45 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment at this time. There are no Commissioners on the board for discussion, so there's a motion to approve tabling the items and directing staff to begin negotiations for extensions with incumbent carriers made by Commissioner Satcher, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We can cast our votes now.
I don't have that on my screen.
So, what's on your screen is for reference? That's why I have twice verbalized to you what the motion is.
That's what I'm reading.
Okay, yep. Okay, so it passes by a vote of six to one, Madam Clerk, and that is with, I assume, Commissioner Cruz. Yes, Commissioner Cruz in opposition. All right, thank you, folks. Before we go to item 46, I'll just reference that occasionally, they're, they just do their best. It's sort of like quick notes down there, and occasionally, it's not exactly accurate. And when it's not, I'm sure to verbalize it more than once, so that the board knows what they're voting on. If you ever have a question, ask, and we'll have the clerk read it back to ensure that we're exact and what, precise in what we're voting on. Okay, the next item of important business today is item number 46, which is also utilities, and it's authorization to advertise and set a public hearing to consider wastewater, water and wastewater rate adjustments for the next five years. I assume Evan is here to present for staff, or perhaps not?
Yes.
You are the utilities guy.
Yes.
All right.
So, good morning, everybody. Again, I am Evan Piluchowski. I'm the utilities director here. I'm actually going to turn it over to Sheila, who will be turning it over to our consultant, who will talk a little bit about the bonds, and then I will talk about the impacts of some of the decisions on water and sewer rates after that.
Thank you. Madam CFO, may you point the microphone up just a little bit towards your mouth. There you go. Perfect. Everyone adjusts it, you know, so, and then some people forget to adjust it.
There you go. Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, Sheila McLean, CFO, Manatee County. Today, we are here to talk about requesting the board to authorize to advertise instead of public hearing to consider a wastewater, water and wastewater rate adjustments for the next five years. Over the last course of the week, we can have, we have briefed the Commission on the impacts of what doing versus not doing this rate increase or this potential rate adjustment has been, and to keep in mind, since 2018, the county, the utility system has not received any formal increase in rates, but during those five years, the system has actually been using reserves beyond their current revenues received. But this has come to the time where we have to take some consideration and look into the aspects of what do we have in the CIP, what do we have in our business operations that is driving all this need that we have additionally. Today, I have, since I've already create, talked about this impact, I would like also to bring in our financial advisor to talk to you personally. It's Natalie Sidor from Prag. She's the Senior Managing Director, who we talk about a little bit about the impact from their side.
Natalie? Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Sheila mentioned, I'm Natalie Sidor with Public Resources Advisory Group, acting as the county's financial advisor. And I just have a few brief remarks related to the rate increases in the context of a bond issue, and then I'm here just to answer any questions that you may have. So, really, there are two key considerations when you're looking at rate increases in the context of issuing new debt, and one is your legal requirements per your bond covenants, and second is the evaluation and metrics that both the rating agencies and investors are going to use when looking at your bond issue. And really, these two groups evaluate credit both on a historical and a forward-looking basis, so they're not only looking at your current situation, your historical track record, but your projections, your plans, what rate adjustments are going to be in place to support your entire capital improvement plan. So, the rating agencies are really focused on your ability to increase rates, but also your willingness and track record of increasing rates, and those rate increases that are going to support both your current and future debt plans. So, for this first bond issue that's being proposed, the county has sufficient coverage in this first year, but without the rate increases in place, your debt service coverage drops below a threshold of two times that the rating agencies look at to maintain those high credit ratings that you currently have. And in addition, investors will question how the county plans to complete your CIP if those, if those rate increases aren't already in place, especially in this type of environment where we're facing increasing project costs and the county's CIP does show future debt plans. So, based on our experiences, without the approved rates in place, we believe that both your ratings and investor participation could, could be pressured. In that case, we would expect that the county would experience higher borrowing costs, again, with that downward pressure on your credit ratings, and then also the potential for investors to either decline to participate, or if they do decide to participate, they could potentially include pricing adjustments or pricing concessions for that additional risk or uncertainty of not having those rates in place to support the completion of the CIP. Those are my comments. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or Evan, if you want to do your presentation, and then I'll, I'll be here for questions as well.
Evan, before you get started, I just want to cover a couple of things here. So, when this was first workshop to the board, the original idea was a 9.75% increase for, I believe, four years, okay? Five years, even better, sarcasm. So, that didn't go over well with the board, and I think was pretty soundly rejected by the board. This is another example, by the way, folks, that this guy inherited. This is another, you know, fun mess that this guy picked up when he came to work here.
Mine, I should go back to this.
Yeah. He wanted out of New York in the worst way, and now he's like, maybe I should go back. So, the 9.75 times five was, times five years was pretty soundly rejected. You and I have discussed a couple of options. One is 9.75 times two, and then tie, and tying things to CPI, right, and then reevaluating in two years. So, just throwing that out to the, I'm bringing this up because you have a motion and a second to approve. So, I'm in sales, and I've learned that when you're, it looks like you've made the sale, stop talking, okay? So, I'm keeping you from talking here. I'm keeping him from talking, and I'm going to summarize this. So, 9.75 times two across the board, plus tying it to CPI, Consumer Price Index. The other thing we discussed is increasing commercial by a disproportionate amount and increasing residential by a smaller amount. You would need to do, I don't know if it's like a full rate study, or you would do, need to do a rate study to some extent and come back to us to show us exactly how much you would increase commercial versus residential. You have a pretty good idea of, I would hope, from talking to Commissioners, of where each of us wants to be on residential. And then that would, of course, be tied to CPI. I think, hopefully, I think the board agrees CPI is probably a good idea at this point. That's what got us into this mess to begin with, is it wasn't tied to CPI. When could you bring us those numbers for increasing commercial by a larger amount than residential? When, when could you bring us a rate study on that? What kind of timeline?
So, we're doing an analysis currently, and we plan to bring that to the board on March 28th.
Okay.
When we're requesting the public hearing.
Will you sit down? I, I need you to sit down with each individual Commissioner before the 28th, so that everyone knows those numbers and has time to digest them before we show up on the 28th. We can do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all that I had requested. Commissioner Baugh, we're getting some feedback there, but Commissioner Baugh is on the board for discussion.
Actually, I was interested in what you were saying, Mr. Chairman. I have mentioned that a few times, that, you know, I think we need to look at, you know, commercial properties and industrial properties and leave the residences alone. You know, your individual homes, everybody's getting hit by inflation, and so to turn around after we tried to reduce the millage rate for two years in a row and then pound them with this, you know, it kind of defeats the purpose, and, and that's why I really wanted to see commercial and manufacturing handle this. So, my only concern is I, you know, I know we're voting, I've already cast my vote, so you know, and it's not positive, to set the hearing for people, but we don't know exactly what we're going to offer them, do we? Not if you're going to look into another study. And I realize that, you know, we're, oh, time is of the essence, right? Well, I, it is what it is. So, you know, when did you, Evan, when do you think you might have that for us on commercial properties and manufacturing properties?
Yeah, we believe we'll have that study within two weeks.
Okay, all right. Well, come back to me then, and maybe I'll change my vote. Okay? Thank you.
And please include, as she said, I did not include only raising commercial and not raising residential. Make that an option as well, so that we can see what it would look like and make our decision. Commissioner Satcher. Okay, so no one else is on the board for discussion at this time. Let's open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on advertising a date, setting a date for a public hearing to consider water and wastewater rate adjustments for the next five years? Anyone like to come forward to speak on that? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. There's no one on the board for discussion. We've held public comment. We can cast our votes at this time. The motion to approve is by Commissioner Cruz, and the second is by Commissioner Ballard. And the item passes by a vote of five to two, with Commissioner Baugh and Commissioner Bearden in opposition. Thank you all so much. All right, we're going to move on then to item number 47. So, these are Commissioner-added items, specific Commissioner-added items, and item number 47, discussion on agricultural overlay district for Elwood Park, was added by Commissioner Ballard. Ma'am?
Thank you so much. So, today, I am requesting that staff explore the feasibility and contours of a potential agricultural historical overlay district for the neighborhood of Elwood Park. This is a small historic neighborhood in District 2, obviously. It's in northeast Bradenton. It goes from the Braden River at the north, 44th Avenue East at the south, 39th Street East on the west, and 51st Street East on the east. The neighborhood was originally founded as a farming community during the land boom of the 1920s, was one of the first planned communities in Manatee County, and was heavily advertised to folks in the Midwest who, who wanted to come and farm. The area originally encompassed about 1,500 acres. Over time, the border of that community has eroded a bit, and the neighborhood is now about 650 acres total. All of the land is zone A1. It's a little pocket of the country that's right in the middle of Bradenton. If you haven't been there, it is very, very charming, very tight-knit community. They have basically remained a farming community since their inception, about 100 years ago. People there want to continue that way of life, and I think that as the county grows, it's important for our tourism industry, for the feel of the county, that we retain our heritage. We do have a model in Cortez Village where a historical overlay has been in place since 1991. Also, I've looked at a couple of other counties, other municipalities that have similar overlay districts. The city of Bonita Springs, for example, has an ordinance, which is 1215, that creates an agricultural rural overlay district. So, basically, what I would like to see is uses consistent with the area's heritage prioritized. I'm also trying to work on a community gardens initiative. There's a parcel of county-owned land of about a half acre that I'd like to see utilized as a pilot for some additional community gardens and maybe a small farm stand attached. So, I'd like to encourage agritourism and promote our local food system there in Elwood Park. And so, basically, what I'm asking for today is just for staff to look at creating that overlay district and, and see, see what we can do to, to give, to, to preserve that, that small agricultural community in Elwood Park.
Thank you, ma'am. Obviously, it's in your district, and we're all very respectful of one another's districts. I will, if all you're asking is for you to sit down with staff and to look at it and bring us options, I'm a yes on that. Obviously, doubles in the details have to see...
100%.
...what you bring us. Commissioner Bob, were you wanting to speak? Nope?
No, I totally agree with you.
Okay. Commissioner Satcher, you're on the board, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding this, it sounds like a neat idea for the community, and so I'll be in support of it. And then with your, on our previous matters, I hate to go back to it, but I was just going to get the boards, if they would be okay with the utility staff or whoever's putting together that presentation, to do what we talked about, how Carmine does with the parks, do one recorded presentation, send it to all of us, and then do follow-ups instead of a full hour or whatever, you know, it takes per Commissioner.
You got that? Okay, all right. I was pointing to the deputy administrator behind you. Okay, all right, thank you, sir. There are no other Commissioners on the board for comment at this time, so we will open up the Elwood Park Agricultural Overlay District idea.
Wow.
Yeah, to public comment. We have eight people who have signed up for public comment. I'll give you the, the order, and if you want to just start forming a line at the podium, that'll be perfectly acceptable. Elizabeth Ramey, Roger Cumby, Dave Mann, Janelle Taylor. We'll start with those folks. Elizabeth, Roger, Dave, and Janelle. So, the way this works is, when you get to the podium, you just tell us your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board on this specific item. Ma'am?
Good morning. Elizabeth Ramey, Manatee County. This is exactly the type of property in Bradenton that we were searching for when we purchased property in Elwood Park. What a blessing to be here. Please preserve this agricultural community and the value it has for families. To be able to live in, grow up, and experience this type of lifestyle in today's world is truly an investment for the future, and I thank you for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Sir, so Dave Mann, then I have Janelle, I think it's Janelle, Jeniel, excuse me, Jeniel, I'm reading that wrong, and then John Rashid, Rashid? Rashid? Rashid, okay. So, if you all want to take your spots behind the podium, sir, first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Roger Cumby in Manatee County.
Roger Cumby in Manatee County. My wife and I have lived at 3915 34th Avenue since 1994. We have a two-acre parcel of land there with a large pond on it. As a child, I came with my mother and picked peas and tomatoes and a couple of different U-Pic fields in the Elwood Park neighborhood many years ago. My mother was an old Georgia girl who loved to can her own vegetables and I usually was the one child who was recruited to help pick whatever she had her mind set on canning. And I think that's probably what kindled my interest in pursuing that kind of independent type of lifestyle. In 19, so in 1991, with my wife and five-year-old son, we found just what we had been looking for in Elwood Park. A vacant two-acre parcel giving us room to grow and spread our wings with no HOA. And most importantly, the protection of A1 zoning that it had. For us, that meant the zoning would protect us from the developers and allow us to live the lifestyle that we wanted and enjoy. We moved in our new house in 1994 and our son was able to grow up enjoying the ability to have a great deal of freedom to explore, play, have friends over to camp and fish with. And now that he is married and has three little ones of his own, our grandchildren are able to come visit and enjoy the same freedoms. We bought the land with the expectation that zoning codes mean something and can be relied on and not easily changed. My wife, over the years, has enjoyed growing many different flowers and shrubs. We have a vegetable garden that supplies us with fresh greens, a pond that has fish that attracts other wildlife. Over the years, the pond has been host to otters, turtles, herons, cranes, ducks, and other critters. We have hawks that return each year to the same tree to nest and hatch their eggs. And just recently, we had two eagles that came and rested in our pine trees. We love and appreciate the closeness and sense of community that we all share as residents of Elwood Park. We all want to preserve the way of life. Elwood Park has allowed us to pursue our many and varied individual interests over the past 100 years or so. We ask that you strongly consider our request to preserve Elwood Park as an agricultural overlay district in a county that is rapidly losing its sense of uniqueness. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, first, last name, county of residence, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Jeniel Taylor, resident of Manatee County. Elwood Park is not a negligible community. We are an institution. The use of our lands for agriculture in the community is as commonplace today as it was 100 years ago. There are very few places that can make such a claim. The Cortez Village, who have, has an overlay district, is one of those areas. A rich history in Manatee County of fishing and community. With celebrations that are extremely popular, residents want to support local business and connect with that history. If fishing is foundationally the left hand of Manatee County, then the right hand is certainly agriculture. However, the citizens do not have a historical district to embrace agriculture in Manatee County the way they do fishing. We have museums, Farm City Week, and the fair, but for the monumental role that agriculture plays in our county, there is no designated safe place where everyone knows ag land is protected, celebrated, and endures. Small business cannot hold out against higher taxation and development forever. For that reason, your reason, in the comprehensive plan 2.5.2 maintains short-term agriculture, it is imperative that independently owned homestead and ag land is preserved. This goes beyond a few hundred residents retaining the legacy of their community and breaks into the reality that we need to protect the heritage and roots of Manatee County before there's only photos left of what was once possible on these lands. When you visit Philadelphia, there are parts of town over 100 years old and right next to them is a high-rise. The history is there because the town is proud of it and they protect it. This board has the ability to preserve a piece of living history in Elwood Park. Manatee County history is not as abrupt as Indians were here, then Cortez came, then Major Robert Gamble had a plantation, we started fishing, and then the snowbirds came. Our founding families farmed in Elwood Park and Manatee County was famous for it. Cattle, gardenias, sugarcane, celery, chickens, and of course oranges were all in Elwood Park and still are. Elwood Park is here today to ask you to see the importance of preserving the heart of Manatee County. Elwood Park already hosts community events such as our Pumpkin Festival, Holiday, Holiday Lights Display, and a Farm and Garden Festival this spring, March 18th. Hope to see you there. I hope you see us, I hope you see your community before its governing body today, to ask to be more, asking to do more, looking to make the county a better place with more to offer for all. Please move forward with an overlay district for Elwood Park to solidify its land use of A1, protecting its future generations so that everyone who lives in Manatee County will have the opportunities to homestead and carry on our most treasured tradition of agriculture and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. And well timed. Yeah. Very well timed as well. Dave Mann, then John Rashid, Rashid, and then Abigail, Arlene, and Joyce. First and last name, your county of residence.
He's not here. So we're skipping Dave.
We're skipping Dave. All right, we'll go right to John. First and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
John Rashid, resident of Manatee County. And I have presentation. We're going to kind of zoom through that because most of what I'm going to say was already said, so we can just.
No worries. We're going to, we're going to reset his time to three minutes because we're waiting on his presentation. Okay, we're ready. We can reset him. Perfect.
So what you see here is Elwood Park, 1940, thanks to the Soil and Conservation Service taking aerial photos way back then. You don't see anything around it. It was, the plat was done in 1924. There was an earlier plat that got incorporated into it that was from 1915. This is the first real platted, large-scale development in Manatee County. The depression kind of knocked us out of whack as far as getting any growth, so in 1940 you see pretty much blank land. There's some farmland in the bottom. Up in the, along the river, there was a little bit of half-acre lots along the river and some of those developed. We go to the 50s, don't see a whole lot of change, but there are more houses, the farming is starting to develop. Get into the 60s, you can see that these were 10-acre plots originally. You start to see a little checkerboard square pattern there. That is the 10-acre lots. The development is slow and steady. We're talking decades for this community to develop around it. You can see you get into 2003, south of Elwood Park, that's what modern development looks like. It's houses that are so close together that at this scale, you can, you can hardly pick them out. Elwood Park, you still see individual lot lines on this is, is early or as far back as, as 20 years ago. Over the next 20 years to get to where we are now, the lots in Elwood Park, those 10-acre lots are getting divided up. Got a lot of five, two, and one-acre lots now. Development is not going to stop in Elwood Park. People will continue to divide lots, but we're limited to the one-acre minimum right now. There is no public sewer there, so people are on septic systems and that limits our, our growth to the one acre. And that's the way we all want it to stay. We, the, the one-acre lots give people room to move, places for their children to play. And so what we're looking at is it's a historic area, 100 years of activity there, continuous, slow growth. It's already zoned A1. It's really the last subdivision west of I-75 that has this designation. There's small pockets of it, but this is a whole real subdivision. It's relatively small, just over one square mile, so we're not talking about trying to limit growth or activity by developers in a large area. This is a relatively small area. And it's pretty much built out, so the limitations don't affect developers really at all. There's only about 60 vacant acres out of the 650 or 700 acres of land that, that are there. And 20 acres of that is getting ready to be turned into some nursery land, so it'll stay agriculture anyway, so we'll be down to about four. So please, vote in favor of investigating the opportunity. That's what we're really asking for today. Thank you so much.
Sir, thank you. Abigail, please tell us your first name and your last name and what county you live in, Abigail.
Hi, my name is Abigail LaRoche. I'm a resident of Manatee County.
We're just testing out the buzzer to see if it works. You're good. Go ahead, ma'am.
My siblings and I are homeschooled. I spend most of every day working with farm animals and helping my dad's garden. Our family moved to Elwood Park because we wanted a homestead. I personally want to show livestock. Because I'm homeschooled, I cannot go to a public school campus to raise my animals. The agricultural zoning of Elwood Park allows me the opportunity to gain the experiences and learn the responsibilities of raising livestock. However, if the zoning of my community changes, then I will likely lose my dreams of showing prize livestock. If I cannot raise and show livestock, then I choose, I, then I stand to lose potentially thousands of dollars in the sales, which would be my college fund. Agricultural land like what I live on, live on, gives me and other, me and many other teens the experiences of agricultural life while still living by the necessary needs of a large family like what I have. I ask you to please help me and others like me in Elwood Park by protecting our land, our animals, our farm, and our future, future as an agricultural community.
That was perfect. Thank you. Well done. All right, Arlene, tough act to follow. You're up next.
I know. Well, I'm just curious, as a salesperson, should we shut up now? Or keep talking?
I mean, John sold me, so. And, and actually, the young lady before you did a pretty good job selling me as well, but, but I would, at least if you want to, you've, you've come all the way down here, you should say a few words.
Okay. All right. So my name is Arlene Kearns and I live in Manatee County in Elwood Park. My family, which consists of four women, my mom, myself, my sister, and my daughter, we recently purchased 10 acres in Elwood Park. One of the reasons we chose this area was to be close to town yet still have the feeling like you're living in the country. We've already built a large barn and are planning on having horse boarding along with many other animals on site, which we already do. This has been a dream of ours for many years and I'm happy to say we are working hard together, not only as a family, but a community. We all work together there to make it all happen. Since we moved here, we have met and interacted with so many wonderful neighbors. Just after the last hurricane, we all came out of our houses and we all started just pitching in wherever or whoever needed more help. You really don't see communities like this anymore and that's really a shame. Elwood Park is such a unique and quaint community. It would be terrible to lose this to Bradenton and the surrounding areas if something were to happen to impair this community. Due to the agricultural zoning, plus the large lot sizes, many of the residents of Elwood Park were able to have their homesteads and their businesses all in one. I feel this has a lot to do with the camaraderie in our community. We take pride in what we've been able to accomplish on our land, which makes our property twice as valuable, at least to us. We all seem to have the same mindset of living a quality life and that's what it's supposed to be about, neighbor helping neighbor. I've never lived in such a welcoming, tight community. Please help us keep it all together. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Did I do as good as for?
You, you did. You all are, you're, you're telling everybody about this little hidden gem and now everyone's going to know.
Everybody's going to want to move.
That's right.
60 lots available.
Ma'am?
Okay, my name is Joyce Smith. I'm a resident of Manatee County. This is on my bucket list to do. I've never spoke before. So all my life I've lived on less than a quarter acre in the subdivision. My last neighborhood was Creekwood, which I enjoyed, but it's not as Elwood Park. My neighbors might have been closer to me physically, but there was no community feel. Over the last year, I've met more people and enjoyed the culture of Elwood Park. I have learned about living off the land, gardening for the first time, growing my own food, which is amazing. And Elwood Park is one of the few areas western interstate you could actually grow your own food and raise your own chickens, as I do as a hobby. I have stage four COPD and since I've moved to Elwood Park, my doctor has amazed how I am getting better. It's a place where people can connect with nature and embrace the outdoors. It allows me to live this unique lifestyle while also living 10 minutes from my doctor's office. I could never live in my Acker Park from a medical leads. Elwood Park is truly the heart of Manatee. Creating an overlay district offers a beautiful landscape and closed-knit community for generations to come. In a world of progress and development, it's crucial to preserve historic neighbors such as Elwood Park. It may have been established over 100 years ago, but it is the same small friendly community it has been, focused on agriculture and personal relations with neighbors. Please move forward with the overlay district.
Well done. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, there are no commissioners on the board. You want to go ahead and put a motion on the screen for us at this time? Wait, is there someone on the board to speak?
So my.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes, my motion is that we direct staff to go ahead and create that, or go, explore the overlay district and, and, and bring, and bring back options to the board.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Commissioner Baugh. You would like to.
Commissioner Baugh?
If you would like to second.
I'll get off if you want on.
If you would like to second that.
Yeah, I would really like.
Oh, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Can I take my name off?
You may, you may. We're going to adjust this. Oh, now it's been.
Come on, guys.
Motion's been made by Ron.
Everybody wants to take the credit.
Okay, okay.
I didn't touch it.
Tough crowd. Tough crowd. Okay, so now we have it. Commissioner Ballard has made the motion to approve and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden, your at-large commissioner. And we can cast our votes at this time. There's no one, we've held public comment, no one on the board for discussion. I'm surprised, I just realized, what do you, there's a school board member that lives in Elwood Park and I'm surprised, and we're all friends with her. I'm surprised.
No, I don't know where she's at.
I, I'm surprised none of you sicced her on us up to this point. You might now.
Working.
She is working. There's a school board meeting right now. That's right, she is working. So we're waiting for everyone, we're waiting for everyone to cast their votes here. Is there anyone still? Okay, there we are. So Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations. Of course, it requires another vote, so you're not clear just yet. Yeah.
It's not over yet.
Okay. Okay, if, if, as you all, and I assume you all are going to depart the room now, or you can, you're welcome to stay, but as you do, please do so quietly because the meeting is still going on. All right, we're moving on to Commissioner Baugh's item, which is item number 48, discussions of potential human resource department solutions. Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been approached by a gentleman here in Manatee County that owns a, a NHR business who is interested in helping us. Maybe we could get him to come in as a consultant and look at HR and, you know, tell us what he thinks needs to be done or not done. He actually called me initially, I think he might have talked to the chairman as well, I'm not sure, you know, about wanting to take over HR altogether because that's what he does and, and he feels very capable of doing so. So I just, I didn't feel comfortable having any more discussion or giving him any information without bringing this to the board because this truly should be a board decision. But I think that, you know, to have him come in and perhaps, you know, do some consulting for us to look at it and see where we are, that certainly might be needed. So just wanted to bring this forward.
So I, I know that there are challenges in payroll and, well, not payroll, but in HR and payroll.
Well, both.
Yeah, payroll was initially what he had talked to me about. But I, there, there are significant challenges in HR. I've spoken to a couple staff members about it, difficulty with Aetna, and I'm not pointing the finger at, at our staff by any means. I know they're shorthanded over there as well. So you're essentially wanting to bring in a consultant, work with the consultant, and come back to us with potential solutions.
Solutions and, and you know, it's, it's, we are short-staffed in, in HR. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Most of us know that and there's been a lot that has transpired in HR. So I think it would behoove us, you know, we've got to look at this seriously and see. HR is a very, very important department for this government and we've got to make sure that we have the staffing that we need, everything's being done appropriately. And I, I think since he's come forward and offered, I, I feel that we should take him up on it.
Okay, there's no one on the board for discussion. We'll open this to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward at this time to speak on bringing in an HR consultant? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment.
Do you want a motion?
You can give, if you want to make a motion, well, they can pull up a motion on the screen. In the meantime, we have Clegg and Washington. Bring in HR consultant. Okay, that's pretty blunt, so we'll have you verbalize, we'll have you verbalize your motion.
I'll wait, thank you.
When the time is right. Mr. Clegg and Mr. Washington are both on the board. Mr. Clegg.
You want me to go first?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I don't know if that's something that can be sole sourced under our purchasing ordinance. I mean, that, this is the first I've, you know, the board's had a discussion about it. That's something you want to talk to purchasing about first, because we may be required to go out for some form of competitive bidding under our ordinance to do that.
What sort of, is it, I thought there was a price threshold.
There's some other things about source selection in our code. It's not just a price, an issue of price. There are times when consulting contracts have to be let competitively. Yeah, they have to be put out for bid or RFP before the board consultant, because select someone.
Okay. Mr. Washington is probably gonna say the same thing.
The exact same thing. So, that's it, Mr. Chair.
So I, the most I could advise you to do would be to, uh, ask the purchasing official to look at it and either to proceed with an RFP or into sole source negotiations.
Do you want to verbalize a motion, then?
Sure. I think the safest thing to do is to direct staff to, um, examine whether or not the county can engage an HR consultant through a sole source contract. That's what I would say.
Okay.
So moved. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Well, I, I need Commissioner Bearden to say so moved.
Yeah, that's what I just asked him.
Okay, so we have a mo, the motion is made by Commissioner Bearden. It is seconded by Commissioner Baugh. Uh, we've held public comment. There are no commissioners on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. And you can't abstain.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay.
It just came up two foot.
That's okay.
I, I vote yes, for the record.
Okay, so the vote passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I will definitely call purchasing and have that conversation if you'd like. You know, and, and we just need to get the, the ball rolling on this, so that we'll know how to proceed forward. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners for your assistance.
Okay, the next item is item number 49, or the next three items are my items. Uh, so item number 49 is discussion on House Bill 947, which is being run, it's a local bill in the State House, and it's being run by Representative Robinson. And that bill, it directly impacts this county. Uh, the bill essentially states that it would, uh, it is a, what's the word I'm looking for, Commissioner Cruz? It is a preemption bill. That's the word I'm looking for. And it preempts Holmes Beach's authority on county-owned land within the city limits of Holmes Beach to build a multi-level parking facility, and it makes this governing body the permitting authority on such a facility. What I'm looking for, and Representative Robinson is looking for, is since it directly involves the county, he's looking for the county to, um, take a formal position in support of the bill. Commissioner Baugh.
Does that?
Sorry, Commissioner Cruz actually jumped in front of you on the speaking. Go ahead, Commissioner Baugh. We'll go to you first.
Well, I'm just curious. Would a, a letter to Representative Robinson suffice, or what else could we do? Is that what you're asking for?
Probably, yeah. I think he's just looking for a formal, formal vote of support, one way or the other. If you want, I think a letter's probably a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. And, and you know, it wouldn't hurt to perhaps, um, send it to the governor, or no, uh, send it to the Speaker of the House and copy our legislators. You can have a copy too, George.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I'd like mine framed.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I was kind of, I was kind of surprised this hasn't come up in some format, because again, we have Representative Robinson kind of putting himself out there on behalf of the citizens of Manatee County and pushing a bill to do something without any real confirmation from this board on a formal matter that we're even gonna act upon the bill. It doesn't require the construction of a parking garage. It gives the option for construction, and honestly, he's never come to us as a, a governing body to vote, to, to even imply that we're going to act upon that bill, otherwise it's just a waste of one of his bill slots to even do so. So, you know, I'm glad this is coming up. I mean, I, I think people are kind of misinterpreting some of it. Yes, it does allow for us to, to build a much-needed parking garage, but people are coming to me acting like it's gonna be a five, seven, 10-story parking garage, Monstrosi. It's, it's, it's a very reasonable bill. I, almost a little too reasonable. He didn't even give us a whole lot of cushion to, to do more. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of his bill, I'm in favor of putting that parking garage up. But, uh, but I'm glad this is coming here. I think we owe it to Representative Robinson to give him the assurance that, that his, his efforts are not gonna go, uh, underutilized by this board once it comes to fruition.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else for, I can't make the motion. Is there anyone else for discussion? Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the reason, and, and Chairman, you might be, obviously be able to help answer this question. The reason for a parking garage is.
So there's a, there's a serious lack of parking and, and access to public beaches. So the beaches in Manatee County are, are owned and operated by the county itself. They're maintained by the county and operated by the county. So the beaches in this county belong to all citizens in the county. And on Annemarie Island specifically, uh, the way the, the island was originally platted out when it was first developed included far more beach access points than you really see in a lot of other communities, which would maximize public access to public beaches. I'm sure you've, you've been watching the saga unfold of when, when the pandemic started, the county did not close the beaches, contrary to popular belief. Holmes Beach, right, they closed boat ramps, but they didn't, they didn't, the county didn't close beaches. Holmes Beach, in coordination with the administration of the county, decided to eliminate on-street parking in the city. So then you basically eliminated the ability of people to access the beach. Now, when the pandemic subsided, Holmes Beach initially did not return. They really dragged their feet on returning those parking spaces. Senate President Galvano and Representative Robinson both weighed in and sent a formal letter to Holmes Beach, sort of insisting that the spaces be returned. The bare minimum number of legally required spaces for beach rene, for state funding for beach renourishment was returned. Great pains were taken to keep it at the bare minimum. We can get into all the weeds on this forever, but it even included, you know, public spaces at, um, at county parks as part of their, their total number of spaces. There was a lot of back and forth over, over spaces. Mr. Hunsaker really helped me get into the weeds on this and showed that there are locations where, uh, the, the public right-of-way, vegetation and landscaping was allowed to be placed in the right-of-way to prevent people from parking, but those spaces were, those, those were counted as spaces, even though it was impossible for someone to park there. More draconian laws have been passed since then, uh, including, um, specifically regarding parking. There have been a lot of draconian laws, but specifically regarding parking, uh, there's now a law that says that all four tires must be off of the road, which, uh, the city says doesn't reduce the number of parking spaces, when that's entirely not true. By having to have all four tires off the road, that you have even more landscaping and, right, that has gotten into the way of people being able to park, and so that starts to limit the number of spaces that are available. Uh, there's a lot of dispute over the number of spaces that actually existed before and after. Also, there were a lot of semantics involved. The city implemented a permit parking, so they, they basically said anything over a quarter mile from the beach is neighborhood parking. That's not beach parking. But if you live in, like Lakewood Ranch, for instance, if you drove all the way to Holmes Beach, you walk more than a quarter mile to get to the beach. That's, you know, that's still beach parking to you. Right? Well, okay. But, uh, but you get my point. There are a lot of folks in town who drove all the way out there. They'll walk, right? So, in the, in the neighborhood parking areas, what was deemed neighborhood parking, Holmes Beach started a permit parking, uh, system, right? So, but, so they said, well, those, those are not, you know, this, there's parking is allowed in these areas, and so those spaces, they felt counted. However, the requirement to get a permit is that you be a Holmes Beach resident. So are those considered, are those returned spaces? And this is where the, the number of spaces sort of became a contentious issue. We, Dr. Hopes and I worked with the school district, excuse me, worked with the school district to open up the elementary school. There are 57 spaces, plus, I think, three, handicap spaces at the elementary school. We worked to open that up. There was a lot of back and forth. The, the first weekend was, I think Memorial Day weekend was when it was gonna be open, and, was it Memorial Day or was it Labor Day? It wasn't the fourth.
Don't remember. I negotiated or worked on the agreement on my sailboat, so I was on vacation at the time. So I think it was after Memorial Day.
Well, they were.
Might have been July 4th.
They were stripping spaces, and so, yeah, I had, I had Clegg on his, on his boat drawing me up. But, but I was like, because the, the holiday weekend was coming, and all these people were gonna go out there, and even though it's 57 spaces, if there's a family of four parking in every spot, I mean, how many people are you now letting go to the beach? Holmes Beach continued to cite, uh, many things, like, I know, I'm sorry, but he asked, it's a long saga. But they cited, they cited too much traffic as an issue. They cited littering as an issue. They cited people, you know, kids and whatever changing their clothes in front of their house, and people urinating in the bushes, and, and I felt that you could shut down Manatee Avenue or Lakewood Ranch Boulevard for the same justification. Too much traffic. Someone littered there, I guarantee you. At some point or another, someone has been decently exposed themselves on Manatee Avenue at some point, right? So we should shut down Manatee Avenue. But of course, it's not what we do. We build infrastructure. We, you know what I mean? We, we try to accommodate the will of the people. 1,100 people a day are moving to this state, and the reason they're coming here is they want to access the beach. They're moving to Lakewood Ranch. They're moving to Parish, and Commissioner Thatcher and Commissioner Baugh's residents have a right to access the beaches that their tax dollars pay to maintain, okay? And so the reason for building the parking garage is to accommodate the, the new people that are moving here and the people who already live here and their ability to access their beach. You cannot put the cat back in the bag. That's not how it works. I understand we're all frustrated by the growing pains that are taking place in this state and in this county, but you have, our job is to build the infrastructure, to accommodate it, and to ensure that the services are rendered and the quality of life is positive and improves for everybody in the county. So you've gotten me sufficiently on my soapbox.
Well, I appreciate you giving me that explanation, um, knowing that, you know, we, we definitely need parking spaces out at the beach, because, like you said, everybody moves here for a reason, and they move here because of the clear blue beaches that we currently have, and not being able to access beach, beaches would be a suppression of their liberty. And so with that being said, you know, I'd be in favor of this, for sure.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and, and speaking to property management, judging on the footprint, there's still some work to be done, but roughly 1,500 parking spaces would be available at that site. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I would know that, I mean, you do a great job of summarizing some of those issues, but I still just wanted to echo and, and voice my support of all, you know, it's a small government in, in Manatee County. It's a relatively small community, obviously growing. But to see the government overreach in this situation has just, um, you know, it just, it makes me sad. It, it's a sad situation that someone would take advantage of, uh, you know, of COVID and use that to make a land grab, to say, you know, it's my island, and now, uh, you know, we've got high-class people here and we don't want you to go home. And I would love to think that that's not what's being said, but every discussion that we've had seems to come back to that. And, um, to the point that we put, you know, we hired extra people to pick up all the, you know, any trash that might be left behind. We put out extra receptacles to take care of some of that. You know, we worked together with the school board, but the city was still trying to cite people.
Whitmore and I got LK to change the timing of the lights out there as well.
To help people get off the island quicker, um, to, because we do understand, we all understand traffic concerns. Um, we have to drive the same roads. And so we were trying to help with that. Um, in every way that I know of, we've tried to be reasonable. And in every situation as we've gone forward, it seems like, um, this, this, you know, this is the big, you know, big government, um, taking advantage of the people of Manatee County. And any attempt to characterize it any other way just doesn't recognize the facts that we've tried everything we can to be able to allow our citizens to go to the beach, and they've continually followed us every step of the way. So it's not like we're excited about building a parking lot. We'll have to pay for it. We'll have to figure that out. That's not what we want to do. But when, you know, you've got big government squishing people, um, and trying to keep them out, somebody's got to stand up, and I think that's what we're trying to do in this situation. So I appreciate Representative Robinson, you know, for bringing this forward and I fully support it, and the chair for, for his hard work on this.
Thank, very well said, Commissioner Thatcher. Thank you. Commissioner Ballard.
Chair, I, I just want to thank you for your, for your leadership on this issue. I've, I've watched you fight this fight for the past couple of years, and, you know, I've, I've read story after story, and I have appreciated it as a citizen of Manatee County, because I, you know, I live 15 miles from the beach, and so it's, it's not an easy thing with two little kids to get them out to the beach and then, you know, to drive around, nowhere to park, um, and then to have, to have the island restricting more and more and more. It's, it's, it's been a really, it's been a really tough thing over the past couple of years, and it's a really tough thing for literally hundreds of thousands of people in, in, in Manatee County. And so, you know, we, we can't, we can't allow, um, that kind of exclusionary, uh, policy to, to take place, and, and we can't allow our public beaches to, in effect, become private. So I, I fully support the bill. I, I really appreciate, uh, Representative Robinson sticking his neck out on this, and I, I, I fully support it.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Baugh.
Just real quick, I haven't heard anyone mention this. They've also shut down some of the beach access points, you know, to be able to walk down to the beach. They've closed those off as well.
Yep, and, and Holmes Beach's defense is private citizens who cut off those access points, but Holmes Beach sort of participated in helping it happen. They did not fight it by any means. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz, which has been seconded by Van Austin Bridge. Um, have we held public comment? We'll hold public comment now. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to discuss? Where are we here? Uh, House Bill 947. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Andrew Struck. I'm actually originally from South Dakota, and, um, I'm actually.
Go ahead. We're having trouble with the timer today.
I, um, I've been to meetings like this back there, but you're the first here. And I'm not sure, I know you want to get back.
Press the button to make your microphone work. Yep, well.
Okay, thank you. I know you want to get that parking garage, right, because of, um, the space. Why not, like in South Dakota, our river, you know, we developed our river, and a lot of that is state-owned. So we have to pay a pass to get in, and it helps with our bike trails. It helps with maintaining everything. Why not that? I don't know if you have that in place or not. I know it seems like it's a free beach, because I've been there, but, you know, it's something that would help the county too, you know, and it would just kind of be a win-win. The other thing, the traffic. I was hit on Manatee Avenue because of traffic. There's needs more pedestrian passageways, not just from 26th to 39th. So, but, you know, that's another issue. But, you know, um, I, I don't know if that would help any of you, you know? What's your, I want to know what you think.
So we don't dialogue during public comment? It's your opportunity to make a statement to the board, and then when you're finished, the board will likely respond.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because I said I'm new.
That's okay. So you have your full three minutes, uh, which you can use or not, and then the board will likely respond when you're finished.
Okay. So, so I think, you know, if you're gonna build, you need some way to fund it, which I think that people would be willing to pay a small fee to do that. And, you know, I think that would be a great thing. It would even improve the looks, you know? To, you know, I'm, so. Okay, I think I'm done.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments, and they're, they're smart ones.
Okay.
Speaker, anyone else like to come forward for public comment? Okay, we're gonna close public comment on this item. The speaker referenced user fees for the garage. I've been like the lone holdout on, on that. I, I know my day is, I know, I know my day is coming. I'd, I'd prefer it not be today, so that we can just sort of deal with supporting the bill for today. But I, I know that, I know that, you know, the day is coming for that. I, I get it. And then she also referenced pedestrian crosswalks in West Bradenton in general, and as we're doing 59th and 75th, we're looking at adding pedestrian crosswalks in those locations near GT Bray and, and Palmisola Park and some other places. And eventually I plan to bring to the MPO, with hopefully Commissioner Baugh's support, some right-hand turn lanes for Manatee Avenue and possibly some crosswalks as well. Uh, but that's a longer MPO process. Well, we have lots of needs. And Lakewood Ranch has everything already, so that makes it simple. Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so I think we, we're ready to vote. We've held public comment. No one else is on the board for discussion. All right, Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Uh, the next item for discussion here is discussion on the Penn Bay Boat Ramp. Commissioner Bearden, this is going to include you, because you are the representative on the WCI, indeed. the WCIND. There is seven and a half million dollars allocated in the CIP for the Penn Bay Boat Ramp. There's a two-million-dollar grant opportunity that is kind of specific, that it's unlikely we won't get it. It is for a boat ramp facility in Manatee County. So we do have to apply for the grant through WCIND, but it's, it's unlikely we'd get rejected. I mean, this is a boat ramp in Manatee County. So that would put us at, say, nine and a half million for this project. Guesstimate is around thirteen and a half million, so we're a little short. And I know we have some CIP issues around here, which is why I've brought it to the board for discussion. And what we came up with, with Mr. Clegg's help and the property owner's help, is, Mr. Clegg might even describe it better than I, but essentially to be, do a partnership with WCIND, which would of course have to be proposed by our representative on that board, which is Mr., Commissioner Bearden, for WCIND essentially to, to take on the project, which would ultimately, aspects of the project would become shared costs with WCIND. That would bring down our cost kind of considerably. In other words, we want them to do the dredging, we want them to dig out the basin and the canal. And they would ultimately do the permitting as well. So that would take a lot of burden off of the county. Mr. Clegg, am I, I've had a lot of meetings in the last two weeks. Am I describing this correctly?
Mr. Chairman, I think so, yes. The property owner, the Penn Bay developer, has some concerns about the complexity and the regulatory challenges of doing a dredging project. And quite honestly, that's always been proposed as something, as a benefit to the county to create a basin for a boat ramp. And so, the thinking is that WCIND may be better positioned than either the developer or the county to handle the project as the lead, but we don't know if they'd be willing to do that. So my suggestion would be, as a starting point, a motion could be to authorize Commissioner Bearden, with the support of staff, to submit a request to WCIND for a partnership on the Penn Bay Boat Ramp Project.
So I cannot make a motion, but we can also, if anyone would like to say so moved.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Ba, seconded by Commissioner Bearden, to engage in a partnership with WCIND. So Commissioner Cruz and Mr. Clegg are on the board. Commissioner Cruz.
I can come off the board.
Yeah, my question just had to do with the, the funding that you came up with. Did we look into the Gulf Coast Consortium funds? We had four and a half million dollars towards Kingfish that we pulled when we couldn't get the permitting done, and it's still sitting. I was just on a Gulf Coast Consortium meeting a couple of weeks ago. That, that money's still sitting there waiting to be redirected.
Correct. So it's split into two separate grants. One's a two and a half million dollar and the other is a two million dollar. The idea is, Kingfish, there are some things at Kingfish that have to be done, like the seawall is like falling in the water, right? So there are some things at Kingfish that do have to be done. The restroom, I think, was already ordered for Kingfish. I might be wrong in my memory. But the idea was to split that up into two and a half million for Kingfish and then two million for, would be, would then go to Penn Bay.
Okay.
That was, that was where this came from.
So to make sure we aren't overlooking a pocket of money we have to reallocate.
No, sir. So that, that's where we came up with it, is, is two million from, from that pot of money you're speaking of, and the other two and a half would go to Kingfish. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have any updates on any of the other boat ramp options that we've spoken about? Because this one is in South and then West County, correct?
Correct. So, you may not like this, but the other option, the other one that I can give you an update on is Coquina South. Coquina, there's two in Coquina. The south one, there was vacant land where there was literally nothing, like we were storing piles of dirt and boulders over there. So Public Works, just with their equipment that they have, is clearing that out and buying some just parking blocks. And that's going to add, I think Charlie Bishop and I guessed about thirty additional spaces to that location, to the Coquina South. Then I think Shell has already been put in on, at Fort Hamer. Am I correct? I haven't been out there in a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Okay, so Fort Hamer has, we've shelled the opposite side of Fort Hamer and the access point is under the bridge now because you can drive under the bridge. So you don't have to, there's still the crosswalk there. People still use it because it's shorter, but there is a safer route option for them to go under the bridge to that location. And that added, I want to say, forty spaces to Fort Hamer. So in total, when we're done with, with Coquina South, we'll have added seventy boat and trailer parking spaces from what we had.
I will point out, the Fort Hamer is temporary until Hidden Harbor Park gets built. That was utilization of land that eventually is going to be repurposed.
It, it is. But in the meantime, but there's also, you're right, it is temporary, but we're also working on other boat ramp solutions. So that sort of holds us over until we get these other things done. I've spoken with Secretary Nandem, L.K. Nandem with FDOT about the property that was purchased along 301 in Ellington by the interchange there where the FSI 75 bridge goes over the river, because there is a lot of excess FDOT property there. And I asked him, because FDOT seems very open to, if you want to assume responsibility for this land and take care of it, by all means, it's yours. And I asked him, would there be a potential for a boat ramp site there, free land for us, riverfront land? And he said absolutely, to reach out to him after the project was complete, because they didn't want to make commitments until they knew exactly what the layout would be. So there's potential for a boat, for free land for a boat ramp in that location, which is in your district. I think that's where you're going, is you want to know about what's in your district. And then the other boat ramp option, which is basically in you and I's district, is the Skyway. There, at our last port meeting, we talked about dredging of the channel at the port and lightly touched on the fact that Tampa Bay Channel will be dredged. The new Army Corps Engineer General wants seventy percent of fill material utilized for a public purpose going forward, instead of just being just...
Washington Park.
Well, it's a lot of it for Washington Park, but there's, when they start, when you do the next dredge, we're going to have huge amounts of fill. And if they dredge Tampa Bay, that channel, it's, it's like crazy amounts of fill that they'll have. And the Corps in the past sort of dumped it out in the Gulf. This board has the option, if we're interested, in trying to have them build us a spoil island right off of the causeway on the, you know, near the Skyway there, that could be utilized as big as the board wants. I mean, they have more fill than they know what to do with. It's a matter of what the board wants to do with it. It could be a park there. It could be a combination of a park and a huge, a huge boat ramp facility. You could put three hundred spaces there easily, which is basically what we have in the whole county right now, prior to Penn Bay. Penn Bay is eighty-eight spaces. That'll be the largest boat ramp in the county when it, when Penn Bay is done. That's a long-term vision, the Skyway, and probably for board members other than us, honestly. But it's there. I mean, it's, it's an option if we're interested.
Do you have any information on, there is another potential spot in Palmetto, at least the address is Palmetto.
Yes.
I think it also, maybe the same, Whitey.
It's also Whiting, Preston. Yeah, it's Whiting, Manatee Fruit property. He's open to that. He's basically giving us the land at, at Penn Bay, and he would basically give us the land at the Palmetto location as well. The problem we run into is money. We're, we're trying to get creative with Penn Bay. There's seven and a half there. If we move two million from the, the grant that Commissioner Cruz referenced, that gets us to nine and a half. It's like thirteen, thirteen and a half to do that project. So we're trying to get creative by bringing WCIND into it, into the mix, and having them fund a, a portion of it, which would probably be three or four million. And that might get us there or very close to there for Penn Bay. Your idea, and it's not just your idea, the idea of the Palmetto site is a great one. It's a good location, but, and the reason I, the board voted to make me the, the boat ramp person at one point, so this is why I have all this boat ramp knowledge anyway. So that location's a good location, but there's no money. I, I don't, I don't have any money for that, and the board hasn't allocated any money for it. So if there's money, I, I think the board's probably in favor, but as of right now, it's just a, a spot on a map with no money.
Right. So since we can't talk about any of this in private, so we'll just, you know, I just want to make it official, we're disagreeing in public. So, you know, I just expressed multiple times, and I never heard a good argument as to why I might be wrong, that if we can take someone that has a boat and wants to be on the water and not have them fight the traffic on Cortez or on Manatee Avenue and get them in the water somewhere else where that is not the traffic that they're actually contributing the entire trip, then we will have helped everyone, including ourselves, including the people that live, you know, say in District Three, that want to go either to the beach or they want to take their boat to the water. They've still got plenty of options there. Obviously, it's the easiest place to put options because it's where most of the coastline is or a lot of the coastline. So for me, it's not actually about, well, I want one in my district. It's just, I want one, you know, Palmetto, Ellington, somewhere that gets where that boat, that homeowner doesn't have to sit there with a, you know, twenty-four-foot boat on the back of their, you know, duly truck, fighting the same traffic that we're all, you know, trying to take a family to the beach or, or whatever. And so, I don't, you know, so just making it official that I disagree. I feel like the, the Palmetto was a good opportunity and I wish we had, you know, moved on it faster, and I hope we still can, because we did move on Coquina. And every vote on that, I believe I've, I've stuck, you know, with the recommendations and with what the chair brought for us. And for me, there's a lot of votes I make, and I'll just, you know, once again, just have to do it in public. I'll say this in public while we're, you know, in the sunshine. There's a lot of votes I make that might benefit a particular area of the county more than another area. Every time I make one of those, I'm assuming goodwill from the other commissioners, and I'm assuming that it, there is a point in time where that will end up getting reciprocated. And, and so it's frustrating if I feel that that's never, that time's never going to come. Because me, I'm not, especially with this board, people that are very like-minded and, you know, get along and all those things, definitely not looking for fights. But at some point, you know, we, I just have to say, how many boat ramps are we going to build? And how much money are we going to spend in those same two areas, those same corridors? And I understand, Kingfish, you know, that was not, you know, this board, once again, that was the city, and that was, stopped us from updating that. But I never voted against that project because I wanted to support that. And I've been there and I understand that boat ramp needs, still needs to be updated. But at some point, especially with what's going on across the bridge, you know, in Palmetto, and, you know, Palmetto, at least not much of it, is actually in my district, but it just seems smart to me to get people off the roads whenever we can and allow them to enjoy, you know, the ocean that the Lord's given all of us to enjoy. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, and I, I respect your comments. And I think we all do try to show goodwill and ensure that each district and each area of the county receives its due from the board. The property owner has made it pretty clear that the Palmetto site is, you know, due to his, you know, his concern is, his number one priority is the Penn Bay, and so Palmetto is kind of contingent on Penn Bay happening. It doesn't mean that we can't secure the land at the Palmetto site until the funding is available. And with boat ramps and being the chairman and any other, anything else, I'm a team player and I carry out the will of the board. So if the board chooses to allocate money for that, then I support it. If they want to reallocate money somewhere else, I support that as well. I, I ultimately carry out the will of the board. Mr. Clegg, did you want to make a comment?
I do, because when we met with staff about this, the, the concern was it might not be a wise investment to buy the land in Palmetto if the Skyway option actually happens. Because to do the Skyway boat ramp, it's a bigger site. It's a more, it's a much bigger site, more room. Yeah, but you, we would still have to put money into that because the county would have to build the ramps and the upland parking. And so, when we met about this, because the, the developer did proffer a contract to buy the land at Palmetto at an appraised value. We don't know what that would be at this point, but we, the staff basically said, why don't we tap the brakes on that to see if in fact we are going to get the option to do the boat ramp at the Skyway? Because it's very close to where you would be putting one in Palmetto, but you'd get a lot more capacity there. So I don't know what the timing of all that is, but I think that was the staff's point. I'm speaking for them.
I don't either, but perhaps what we can do to ensure, because I think we want to, we all want to ensure that there is a North County ramp, right?
Right. It's not off the table at all.
Right.
It's just that the Skyway was the more, bigger bang for your buck.
Sure, we need North County access regardless. So I feel like I'm spending multiple boat ramp plates here at once, but that's okay. What if we reach out to, I would assume Carlos at the port with his connections to the, with Dave, and their connections to the Army Corps is probably our best avenue. Commissioner Ba probably knows this best. I mean, she was port chair for a long time. Is it, when it comes to the Army Corps, Commissioner Ba, is, should Carlos and Dave Sanford be our route to them to find out what the real potential is for the Skyway spoil island?
Absolutely.
Okay. And why don't we try to put a, a hold on, if we can, with the developer? Because I don't think he's developing that Palmetto site anytime soon. So I'll communicate to him that we sort of, you know, give us first ride refusal on that before he moves, you know, with any other buyer. And then we'll start pursuing more aggressively the Skyway site? Does the board have any objection to that?
No. I thought we were going to do that anyway.
Well, I would like to see us take the information and then to make, get a decision made at that point.
Yeah.
Because the sad thing is, you know, the answer may be, yeah, we're definitely going to do that sixteen years from now, you know? And so you're going to have a million boat spaces, you know, when, when things look very different than they do now. And so, I would like us to get the option to make that decision together, which, one, to pursue based on what type of price and what type of timeline we're considering with each, once we get the information.
Okay. So why don't I work on that and I'll bring back a presentation or at least a report, feedback on the potential for either of those two sites?
I'd appreciate that.
And we'll talk to FWC as well. Good, good idea. Okay. I like that plan going forward. All right, so to move forward, we, we have a motion by Commissioner Ba, seconded by Commissioner Bearden, to direct staff and Commissioner Bearden to move forward with a potential partnership on the Penn Bay project. We'll open this to public comment. If anyone would like to come forward to speak at this time on a potential partnership for the Penn Bay Boat Ramp. All right, seeing no one will close public comment, there's no one on the board for discussion, we can cast our votes now. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. And then the last item that I put on here, I think is pretty self-explanatory. It's sort of the elephant in the room that we have never discussed, and I saw that our next meeting is not a regular meeting, is not until the 28th of March. So it's four weeks away. Yeah, so I, I'm not looking for the board necessarily to take any action, do whatever you want to do, but I thought we should at least, as Commissioner Thatcher said, we're in the sunshine here, and we're not going to be in the sunshine outside of a land use meeting until, or a workshop until the 28th. So should we at least discuss potential county administrator search and a timeline? Or is anyone ready to discuss that yet? Or do we want to schedule a discussion on it for a later time? What do you, I just want to know what the board wants to do. Commissioner Ba.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for putting that on the agenda. I was going to do it myself, but I saw that you had done it, so I appreciate it. I think that this is going to be, it's not going to be a quick process. It's going to take a while. So I would suggest that what we need to do first, and it's probably going to take a month, two, maybe three, to find the right firm to head it up for us to get the information and move forward with it. You know, I think first of all, we need to say, are we going to do a national search? Are we going to do a state search, like through the Florida Association of Counties, perhaps? But I think the bottom line is, these are decisions that need to be made so that it can be moved forward. But it's going to take, you know, probably a couple of months to move that, to, to really get even into the process. So I'm glad that you brought it up today. I think we do need to have that discussion.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, it's something we need to eventually get started on. I mean, this has been a few weeks now.
weeks now and last time, two years ago, we said we were going to do a search and elected not to. Usually a search, I'm assuming, would be done through HR, but we're having discussions about HR.
I do that.
So, it is something we need to look into, I mean, we're fortunate that we've got a little bit of time, one, because we have a great acting county administrator who's going to keep things straight however long it takes for us to source a future permanent. Second, we're about to start into budget season, then we have a month of recess in the summer, it's not the time or place to switch somebody midstream in the middle of a budget season anyway, so i- if we're looking out towards kind of more like end of fiscal year as our target for having somebody to come in fresh, we've bought ourselves time, but that doesn't mean we should take that time to sit around and do nothing and then rush through it at the end, this is too important of a decision. So, I don't know the right answer, maybe we should talk to a few other counties, it seems like half the counties in the state of Florida have replaced or searched for a new county administrator, county manager, or city manager, or whatever the case may be, City of Bradenton did, City of Sarasota, a number, Longbow Key's doing it right now. So, we do have some contacts we can reach out to for some best practices and guidance and then maybe bring it back at the next meeting as kind of a blueprint on how we want to proceed.
Thank you, sir. Bearden, Baugh, and Clegg. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Definitely agree in regards to doing a national and state search for a county administrator. Obviously, I want to make sure that we go through a pretty extensive vetting process in regards to that and ensuring that, you know, we pick the right person for the job as well as not rushing it, but also coming up with a timeline when, you know, we need to pick a new county administrator. I think that's a very solid approach to this and so totally in favor that we need to start the process and we should do it, you know, within the next few weeks or month on, in regards to that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Clegg and then Commissioners Ron and Ballard.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my only suggestion was you could ask FAC, you know, you could ask them if they have some resources, I think they were willing to help us and other counties in the past and they seem to know the lay of the land. And having been through this now, once before as county attorney and a couple of times as an assistant county attorney, I do, you know, and maybe it's a little bit outside of my lane, but I think it's important to do it in a way that gives the board a chance to build a broad consensus about somebody as opposed to rushing through a decision. That's all I will say, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ron, Ballard, and Baugh. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One quick question, do we, once we find a search company or whatever, do we have to send it out to like RFP where we have to have, procure them and go through that process and then they start searching and then we finally find the right person? Or is that how the process would have to work, where we get to send out three for three and then get three back or do we can do a, like we were talking about doing the HR, where we can just go after one company to do our search for us?
Excellent question.
Who is here from staff who can answer that question?
I know, geez, I wish there was a division that could do that. Jacob Erickson, purchasing official. So, just to let everybody know, so we do have three executive search firms on contract right now. It is ADK, Colin Basenger and Associates, as well as Management Partners. We went through a solicitation process back in, I believe it was 2021, so those are three resources that you guys do have at your availability right now, should you choose to use them.
Can I ask one question?
Do you have the floor, sir?
So, those are all owner-attainer right now that we can pick from any one of them or do all three have to go out and do the search?
You can pick from any one of them.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ballard, Baugh, and Washington. Commissioner Ballard?
So, I just wanted to say that I agree with Commissioner Cruz that I, it's probably not wise to stop midstream through the, through the budget process and replace the administrator. So, I do think that moving through the process kind of slowly, maybe with a target of the end of the fiscal year as our, as the time when we would be looking at our new administrator is probably a wise timeline, but I think that the sooner we start the search, the better and I think that a broad search is a, is a great idea.
Commissioner Baugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you know who we used last time? It was awful, as I recall. It wasn't your fault, I mean, by any means, it wasn't your fault, but it was not good.
If I remember correctly.
No, I didn't mean who we hired. No, you remember we, when we used them before, which company was it?
Yes, ma'am, if I remember correctly, it was a company called Springstead Waters that changed their name to Baker Tilly Val.
They needed to change their name.
Something like that, I believe.
Yeah, okay, but we're, we don't deal with them now, right?
No, ma'am, we do not have a contract with them.
Oh, that's good, okay. And, and what I just want to add is that the reason that I think it's important that we're having that discussion is, I agree, I mean, you, it's kind of hard to take away during a budget time and bring somebody new in, I mean, that would be a most difficult time. But I think if we do it correctly this time and stay with the process, it's going to take months, it's not something that can be done in a, in a month or two. And I think, you know, a lot of it's optics, we've got to do it right this time, I won't do it any other way, I'm not going to do it how we did last time, for sure. So, I learned my lesson, I should have stuck with it. So, you know, I'm glad that we're having this discussion because we do need to pick the company that we want to look at and I do agree with what Commissioner Cruz and Mr. Clegg said, I think it's very important that we look at the Florida Association of Counties as well, but I don't want to hinder ourselves, you know, by only going with FAC. I'd rather have a bigger process, more people to look at and so forth. And I think to make those decisions on how we move forward, it's probably going to be something that's going to take two, three, four months really, to make a good decision on how to move forward, so just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, will we be putting together, obviously this is the first time that, you know, Mike, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Ballard have done this, will we be putting in requirements that the board would require this individual to have or?
So, what we'll do is, is we would all basically, let's say requirements, like litmus tests or anything, but we would all put out their, you know, qualifications that we would prefer.
Got it. Now, are we obviously going to open this up to the private sector as well?
Yeah, I mean, it's advertised like any other job ultimately and so, that's what I was thinking to myself, there's 21 million people in Florida, I mean, certainly there's somebody in there we could agree on that wants the job, but I had this conversation with Chad Chote because they're looking for a superintendent and they had this whole debate over national versus state and there's the thing where they're like, you know, state laws are kind of specific and it's better to have someone who's from your state, but at the same time Chad said, there's something called the internet that's out there, like literally anyone in the world can apply for the job, you're not limiting it to only state people. But you know what, the City of Bradenton found Rob Perry in Albuquerque and he's awesome.
I know, I was thinking that.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I'm not, I go either way, national, you know, we can include Canada, I don't care, anyway, okay, no, maybe not, they're out. Trudeau better stick with the job he's got, yeah. Yeah, Cruz, Cruz has eliminated Canada.
People moved here.
They do move here from Canada.
For a reason.
90% of the Canadian population lives within 100 miles of the US border, that is a fun fact for you. Satcher, Commissioner Satcher, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thought this might be a good time to mention some of the, just the positive interactions I've had, you know, with Acting Administrator Lee Washington. So, I mean, we've already had in just a couple of meetings, you know, we've already disagreed, like me and him disagree about one issue that was in front of all of us and I disagree. But he told me the truth and I can deal with that. So, I really appreciate the fact that, you know, it seems like we, you know, he's been shooting straight. I got, on Saturday, I'm getting, you know, email after email with FYSA in the, you know, as the first letters and I'm like, what the heck is that, I got to go Google what that, you know, and so that is for your situational awareness apparently, which sounds much better than FYI, so I was like, oh, I'm going to start using that. And so, so I appreciate that and, and that's what, you know, I, I think all of us are looking for processes and procedures to be in place where instead of trying to circumvent each other, we're trying to work together with each other and trying to go around things or push things through in a way that everybody looks bad if you say something, et cetera. I don't think we have to do that moving forward, we shouldn't have to and not only that, but if we do have an honest disagreement, I bet everyone will be okay and we'll still move on and it'll be okay for the people of Manatee County. So, you know, that's, that's one of the things that I'll continue to look for as we move forward from, from each of us and from staff as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz, how do you feel about, we have a lot of workshops coming up, how do you feel about workshopping this in April?
Yeah, I think what we should do is figure out who we're going to use, I mean, we've used some search agents like recently and we've had some pretty good success with people like Evan and Courtney, I'm curious who, who sourced those, those applicants outside of the state of Florida. I don't care if it's in state of Florida or not because honestly, I, I think a lot of our recent administrators have probably done more than they need to do and the less they know, the better in some cases. I mean, you know, I mean, our administrators should, should basically be a supervisor over very smart directors, I've said this before and let the, and the directors need to know state policy, Courtney needs to know how development works relative to the Florida statute, Eva needs to know how utility systems work. The county administrator does need to know those things, they need to know how to make sure those people are doing their jobs, so I'm, I'm a little less stuck with the state thing. The advantage of FAC is they'll source government employees, so we can't just use FAC, but they'll put it up on their boards and there may be some great administrator from someplace else that's working for a small town that wants to work for a bigger county and they've got that reach, but we can't only use FAC because we want to, I, I believe, without speaking for the board, the board is probably going to put a weighted priority towards private sector over, over public sector, just based on, on the history of how we view people, but it, it doesn't mean we shouldn't be looking at both, but I think we should need to figure out who is going to be the, the search firm because they need to be involved in that work session, they need to hear our commentary, otherwise it's pointless commentary just talking into the abyss. And then we need to make sure the public's there and have the public give some comments about what they've seen about our recent few administrators and what they'd like to see, I think we owe it to them to give some input, especially since we didn't do a search last time. And then, you know, if we target it in October 1st start, that gets us to the first day of the new fiscal year, it's right after budget season's over, everything else is done, it gives adequate seven months to do it, it also gives staff and that the acting county administrator comfort that there's going to be a window of time where there's going to be some stability here, so there's not always that looking over the shoulder of is somebody going to get hired out from under me any, any minute, that would be my preference, is figure out who we're going to use for a search first and then schedule the work session where we can speak directly with them.
Thank you, sir. Clegg, Baugh, Bearden. Mr. Clegg?
A couple of things, October 1st is actually pretty tight for them to start, if you back it up and the, the kind of people you're talking about hiring are pretty high level and they're going to be.
I don't have a further out.
Yeah, I'm just, just trying to think through the timing, having been through this a number of times. In answer to Commissioner Bearden's question, this, the, the process and what you're going to look for and what you're going to roll out publicly should come before you, preferably from your executive search firm for the board to have a decision point, to have input on that. So, you should, you'll have the chance to look at all of that. I guess my one question for, for Mr. Erickson is, do you have a sense of, you know, which of these firms, are they all basically equal in their qualifications where you're comfortable picking one? If the board wants to have them present at a workshop, are you at a position where you could do that?
Sure, yes, sir. We can, they're, they're all equally qualified to be able to perform this type of search, that was kind of the purpose of the whole executive search services RFO that we submitted, so, and if, if the board would like, I can send the proposals over to you guys that we received so that you all can take a look at them and you could look at their qualifications and figure it out.
Thank you. Commissioner Baugh?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I probably don't have to say this right now, but I, I got to tell you, after what we've been through, I definitely want an administrator to come in that has some local government experience, I think that's very important. They need, they need to understand local government, I mean, that is huge. And the other thing that I would say is that, you know, it's, they've got to understand all the different departments, they need to have a basic understanding because if not, they cannot manage staff if they don't know what staff's job is. So, I, I think it's real important that the next administrator has experience with local government, understands what the different departments are, has a basic understanding of utilities, the building department, whatever the case may be. So, you know, I'm going to look for someone with experience in local government, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bearden, Satcher, and Ron?
Mr. Chair, you know, regarding experience, to me, if you have a good manager that's in a situation, they'll be able to manage any situation that's brought to them, right? So, one of the key aspects that I'm going to be looking for is, has this manager managed 250-plus people in an organization? Because I think that's going to be very important. I don't really care about how many letters they have behind their name, to me, that doesn't matter. I want to make sure that they have the ability to manage a large organization at one time, so that's going to be important.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, one thing was just said, that I'm just going to go ahead and, I don't know if to take issue with, it might be the right way to say it, I mean, it was just said like, well, as we do that, we're going to be sure to run each thing by you as we go. And, and so, you know, we, we've made some votes here today and there's been things, but I mean, so we're talking October is too soon for any type of change in this, we're being told by staff that October is too soon for any type of change, you know, get our contract, you know, with who I just complimented and mean it sincerely, but the contract for the acting administrator wasn't, I wasn't even briefed on. I mean, I had, you know, top-level staff and the county attorney's office in my briefing and no one bothered to mention it. And it was negotiated without any input from me, I know, and so who is calling those shots? I'm glad that after October we'll make a change and then the commissioners are going to be able to be a part of those decisions, I'm glad, but I am frustrated that that isn't already part of how we run things. I don't understand, I feel like we are being very slow to make adjustments. We had an old board, I've said this multiple times, we had an old board that was actively working to, for lack of a better phrase, burn down the house. They wanted us all to look as bad as possible at every step of the way because they were in the minority. That board is gone, those people were elect, voted out and at this point, we need people that can learn how to work together and keep everyone involved and take into consideration the laws that we have to navigate. So, we don't get to call each other and say exactly what we're thinking and how we want something to do, so we need somebody that's going to be willing to do the extra work to get the information to each of us moving forward with the knowledge that when it's all said and done, we will probably, for the most part, agree, but allow us and give us the respect to make a phone call, to take some time, to tell us about those important things. And so, I want to see more of that on every, just about every level as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question, there's seven members up here, we all have different ideas of what we want to see in a county administrator, how is that process going to come together? I mean, Commissioner Baugh was dead on on things that she wants, Commissioner Satcher wants certain things, Commissioner Bearden and the rest of us do. Do we sit down individually with the search company and say, here's the kind of what we're looking for in a county commission, in a county administrator from every one of us and then they bring this process back together and say, here's what, you know, almost like a survey of, I don't want to do a survey, but almost a consensus of what the, the board wants and is looking for in an administrator? Because we're all going to have different ideas of what we want and I'm just trying to figure out how that process is going to roll through in the next eight months to get us to that point where we're all in the same boat with the same idea of the same look of a new county administrator that we would want to have. So, is that what the process is with either of these search firms? Is that what they sit down and do with us and is that the procedure?
Yes, sir, so, so each of the, each of the firms have their own little nuances on how they do their specific searches, there's a different process that they each follow, however, one of the main points with these search firms is to take all of the information from the key stakeholders, develop a job description, develop the requirements that y'all are looking for and then in turn, they go out and do their thing, they go out and they do, they do their national search, they do the education verification, all of the necessary requirements, they bring back candidates to you all, you all can choose to interview them, you can shortlist, you can do whichever, however the board decides to move forward, there's a lot of flexibility with these contracts to be able to do that.
Just add to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sir, typically there's a timeline that's laid out too and it's, you know, the school boards have got published timelines for their superintendent searches right now and so you can go on there and see, you know, when they're going to, when they're going to go out to advertise, they get a school board input first and then they roll that out and then they go back and they do interviews and they shortlist and then they select somebody, there's a few steps and, and that's There's a few steps, and that's, and the board takes a recess in June. So, you know, you've got one meeting at the end of July, and then if you're going to make a decision by August 1st to give that person 60 days, you know, before they start on October 1st, you'd have to do it in your first meeting back from recess in July. So I'm not suggesting you can't do it, but I think you need to, probably need to get going sooner rather than later, if that's the board's goal, to have somebody in here by the beginning of the next fiscal year. It's probably going to have to start happening pretty quickly, which means you probably need to get that firm under contract to start talking to the board and start putting this stuff together.
Commissioner Ron.
Then that would not be a board decision on who we're going to choose, or can we let staff choose who we want to use as a search company for the new administrator? Because you're talking about speed in this whole process.
Right.
I mean, I don't want to go through 14 workshops on to decide who is going to be the search firm.
You don't have to. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that was the point of my question to the purchasing official, is he has the authority to go ahead and do that, and if they're equally qualified and they're all on retainer, he can just pick one and they can, and get that process started now. Did I misunderstand that, Jake, or are you comfortable you can do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you don't have to go through a purchasing process. We will need to get started if we're going to do this by the end of this fiscal year.
My point is, we need to get this ball rolling and not wait any longer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to, I mean, I'm all forgetting the ball rolling, as we said, but I think it's also important that, I don't want anyone, you know, listening to think, okay, so that's the only options they have moving forward. I want us to be able to have some flexibility, and I want the public to understand that, that if, you know, Commissioner Ron is whatever, you know, he meets some person that's just amazing and says, oh, you know, and they didn't go through this search process, but he brings them before each of us, and we all talk to this person, and you look at the resume and the body of work and the history, and we all think, whoa, that's somebody we can all get behind. I just don't want to endure, because I have before, a year or two of, that was not the process, you all agreed this, you know. I think this is a great way to start, but I'm not necessarily committing. Obviously, we're, you know, we're the board, and we can make decisions. And then I would just ask each step of the way, if someone is, if someone is getting a veto authority, so the way you rig this, let me just put it this way, the way you rig this is five people make it through a search process, all right? They mention the five names to someone, and that person says, well, I don't like these three, and so those three are gone, and then we all get to choose between two. And that's not right, especially not if we don't find out who the three were and how it went down. We should at least have some input before names are, you know, struck off of our consideration. You know, I'm not saying anybody has done that or is doing that. I'm saying we should all go in with eyes wide open and realize that the smart thing would do, to do is, once we get through basic parameters, for us all to get to at least, you know, take a look at the people that are coming forward for our consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. And the board's starting to light up again. I'm going to ask a question. Do we want to come back? It's 1:00. Do we want to go to lunch and come back and continue this? I mean, it's a long conversation, that's okay, but do we want to? I did not anticipate all of this. I thought we were going to just say, hey, let's set a date for a workshop to discuss it.
I knew it was going to happen, that's why.
Do we want to set a date for a workshop? Do we want to come back after lunch? I'm looking for, we should set a date for a workshop.
I do, too. And I understand Commissioner Satcher.
Okay. So, yes, so, Mr. Washington, let's set a soonish date for a workshop then for this. Commissioners, before we go any further, when you walk out of the door here, you're going to have this news on you. So there has been a, no injuries, and there are no leaks at this time, but there has been a significant train derailment in Manatee County. It is in Commissioner Ron's district. There are, Manatee County EMS, we have 15 units on scene at this time. Manatee County EMS, Cedar Hammock Fire Rescue, Hazmat crews, East County Fire, and Sarasota have all responded to the scene. It will be multiple days before the tracks are cleared. There's no roads are blocked at this time, and there are no injuries at this time, and we are monitoring air quality around the site at this time to ensure that there are no gas leaks. And at this time, no one has been evacuated, although it is an industrial area, and there aren't residences right up against those tracks. But there has been a pretty significant derailment. So just want to make you all aware of that before you walk out of the room here. So, you know, Godspeed, obviously, to all of our first responders who are on scene.
I just have one thing I need to add.
Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, I just wanted to let everybody know that I got a phone call yesterday from a commissioner in Hillsborough County, and Commissioner Ballard, you're going to love this. He was asking me questions about our library workshop.
Okay.
And Hillsborough is standing with us, and they're looking at how to stop some of the madness that we have found in Manatee. They have found the same things in Hillsborough. So things are coming together nicely. I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Great job.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anything further?
I just want to.
Commissioner Ballard.
I just want to make sure that going forward, we know that Jake is actually going to be starting the search process. We're not paused, waiting for a workshop. We're getting started with the search process as we speak.
With the company, yes.
He's going to work on procuring a company to do the search for us.
Right.
But the board still has to meet to workshop to determine what qualifications we prefer.
Do you have to bring us a contract to approve?
Well, so that's what I wanted to clarify. So, like I mentioned, I can send you the three proposals that were received in response, so then that way you can look at all the companies and kind of determine which direction you'd like to move in.
You can go ahead and do that, and I don't mind putting that in a land use or something before the 28th so that we can just discuss the search company, you know, amongst ourselves, and then vote on the contract at that time. So why don't you go ahead and get something together for us on that? Mr. Clegg.
We're not really voting on a contract. They're all under contract, so it's just a work assignment.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't have to approve a contract for this?
Have to come before the board, then?
Does not have to. You could just.
Does the board want it to come before the board, the selection of the company, or are we going to rely on Jake's expertise on this?
That's what we got them for.
I'd like to rely on Jake's expertise.
That's why we're paying you, Jake.
That's the right move.